All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Excuse us, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. All right, welcome to our council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wished to address the city council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. For your information, the items listed in Section 11 of the agenda are for first reading and introduction, and the council will not take final action on them tonight. If you have questions on those items, please see the city staff in the back of the chamber here, and thank you for participating in your city government. And will everyone in the audience please stand for the invocation by Pastor Delbert Roberts from Champion Baptist Church? I don't see Pastor Roberts. I don't know Pastor Roberts. All right, if we just please stand for a moment of silence. All right, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Robertson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Here.
Councilmember Paul?
Here.
Councilmember Urban?
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher.
All right, agenda update. And city manager, do you have any add-ons, corrections, or deletions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The first item, it's not on the agenda. If anyone is here for Harvest Grove, formerly known as Nona Townhomes, it was originally advertised for this evening, but it is not on the agenda. That will be on the November 13th city council meeting. Additionally, I have several items to remove from the agenda this evening. On consent agenda, we would like to remove item 14, the Main Street Agreement, and item number 15, the preliminary subdivision plan for the Walker subdivision. And I have three items that we would like to continue to the November 13th meeting and the public hearings. Items nine, 10, and 11, these were the rezonings for three city parks, Stephanie Lee Rothstein Park, Rumel Road Park, and Cannery Park. If I could ask the council to please continue those to November 13th? And you want me to continue, or do you want to make a motion now?
It's up to the mayor. So each one would have to be read in, or we can wait until it comes up, whichever one you want?
To vote to move them on?
Yes. We'd have to read each one?
Yeah, let's go ahead and read all three of them in, and then vote one vote to move it.
Okay.
Can we go ahead and do that now?
Yes.
And, so is that starting with item number nine?
Public hearing number nine, yes.
Madam Clerk, please read public hearing number nine.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-55. In ordinance of the city council, the city of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment for the zoning map of the Land Development Code of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately plus-minus 24.317 acres identified as Stephane Lee Rothstein Memorial Park, rezoning project ZMA 25-00008 from A agricultural to OR open spaces recreation located at 2701 Missouri Avenue, providing for entering the designation of official zoning map of the filing and planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
And please read item number 10 and 11.
It would be easier if we could take a motion on each one?
You want to do them individually? Okay. Can we get a motion to move it to the November meeting?
Motion to continue.
Motion to continue, Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher? Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
And Madam Clerk, please read item number 10.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-56. In ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment of the zoning map of the Land Development Code of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately plus-minus .0118 acres identified as Rumel Road rezoning project ZMA-00009 from R1A single-family dwelling to OR open space recreation generally located on the southeast corner of Rumel Road and Eastern Avenue, providing for entering the designation of official zoning map filing on the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
And can we get a motion?
Motion to continue.
Motion to continue, November meeting. Councilmember Paul?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher? Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
And please read item number 11 into the record.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-57. In ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment of the zoning map of the Land Development Code of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately plus-minus .097 acres identified as Cannery Park rezoning project ZMA 25-00010 from R2 single and two-family dwelling to OR open space recreation located at 901 Virginia Avenue, providing for entering the designation of official zoning map filing on the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
And can we get a motion?
Motion to continue.
Motion to continue, Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Deputy Mayor Gilbert. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher? Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
And I have one item on council action to remove. That's item number one. It's the appeal for the Historic Preservation Board ruling for 1122 New York Avenue. That will be moving to the November 13th meeting.
There's no need for a motion to continue that one.
You don't need to?
No.
Take a vote, okay. And prior to the final public hearings, what were the other two items? You said one was not on the agenda, but...
Consent agenda items 14 and 15 were both removed.
Were removing?
Just removed.
Removed, okay. Sorry, we gotta have an echo that I can hear the 14 and 15, okay. All right, and next up here, we have Presentation of Employee of the Month for the Month of September to Michelle M. Acosta.
Good evening, Leanne Temeno, I'm the Flood Play Manager with the Building Department here at the city of St. Cloud. And tonight, it's my honor to recognize Michelle Acosta as our September 2025 Employee of the Month. Michelle began her career with the city in community development back in 2019. During her tenure at the city, she's demonstrated unwavering dedication and a deep passion for serving our community. Today, she serves as the city's Community Rating System, CRS, Coordinator, acting as a vital liaison to FEMA and ensuring compliance with the National Flood Insurance Programs, CRS program. Her efforts directly result in a 25% savings on flood insurance premiums for policy holders in the city of St. Cloud. In 2021, the city of St. Cloud elevated its commitments to flood play management and regulation, successfully improving our CRS classification from a seven to a class five, a significant achievement that increased insurance savings from 15% to 25%. In 2023, Michelle became the first CRS Coordinator in our city's history to maintain the rigorous standards of a class five community. Thanks to her diligence and expertise, the city received perfect scores on annual submissions to FEMA for two consecutive years, making St. Cloud a trailblazer in flood play management across Osceola County. With an eye toward achieving a class four rating in the coming years, Michelle is already laying the groundwork, coordinating across departments to enhancing water management practices and land development regulations, further safeguarding our community from flood risks. Currently, Michelle is preparing for the city's comprehensive five-year audit with FEMA, a complex and demanding undertaking that requires strategic planning and exceptional program management. Her commitment, attention to detail, and leadership make her a model CRS Coordinator. Michelle, your dedication makes our Flood Play Management Division and Building Department shine, and your work continues to elevate St. Cloud's reputation and resilience. We're truly fortunate to have you leading this critical effort. Congratulations, Michelle, on being named St. Cloud's September 2025 Employee of the Month.
All right, next up, we have Presentation for Team of the Month for the Month of October by Gabby Durand.
Good evening, everyone. I am Gabby Durand. I'm the Aquatic Superintendent for the Parks and Recreation Division. These are my two beautiful pole instructors here from the Chrysaline Aquatic Center, and I am thrilled to celebrate them, Shella Newton and Jessica Garcia. Jessica and Shella lead with their heart, they teach with purpose, and they show up every day driven by their commitment to see their students succeed. A lot of their students are actually here in the audience with us today to celebrate. From infants taking their very first splash to adults building confidence in the water, Jessica and Shella are guiding people of all ages. And let's not forget our water fitness programs. Hey ladies, I know you're out there. They've kept them active, balanced, and cores engaged with workouts that are fun, as fun as they are effective. But I do want to take a pause and talk about something very serious on why it's important and what they do what they do. Drowning is the leading cause of death amongst children in the United States. From ages one to four, it's the number one cause. From children up to age 14, it's the second-leading cause. Autistic children, they're at a higher risk, okay? It's the most likely of drownings are gonna happen and deaths are gonna happen for autistic children. So, that's why what Jessica and Shella do isn't just important, it's life-saving. This year, both became certified as adaptive swim instructors that show that water truly welcomes everyone, and we've been able to now service a community that we haven't been able to do before. Their patience, creativity, and compassion ripple far beyond the pool. Jessica and Shella, you're not only helping people swim, you're making our community a safer one. I am so grateful to be your leader, and it is an honor to recognize the both of you as employees of the month. Congratulations, thank you for making waves in our community, keeping us all afloat, and never forgetting to blow your bubbles.
All right, now I'd like to ask our Police Chief Doug Gurkey to come on up here. And also, I'd like to ask Corporal Fugere to also join us here at the podium.
So I requested Corporal Fugere to be here tonight. He's moving to Tennessee and leaving us, but he's real special to us at the city and in our downtown at the CRA. How many years, Corporal?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six years, and thank you very much for keeping us safe and being part of our family.
So many of you have seen him. He is a staple in the downtown area, the CRA. He helps us, he helped us quite a bit with our large-scale event planning, so he was always on the calls, ensuring that we had the proper resources for law enforcement, public safety, barricades, so we can actually have safe events. And it's a, it's a true loss to have Corporal Fugere leaving us, and we are certainly gonna miss you, so thank you for everything you've done. We wish you Godspeed, and we wish you the very best in the next chapter of your life. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have a presentation by the City of St. Cloud Veterans Council, and we have here Trooper Steven Montero, our Vice Chair of the Veterans Council. Feel like I need to put everything on Bluetooth over here, shut everything off so this is static. There we go. Good evening, guys. My name is Steven Montero. I'd like to thank the mayor, the council, the leadership here for allowing me to be here. For those that don't know, I'd like to also say thank you to the community for allowing me to be here. Some of you guys might know me as Trooper Steve, but tonight, I'm here as Steven Montero, the newly-appointed Vice Chairman of the amazing Veterans Council that has been developed here in the city of St. Cloud. Representing veterans and their family is something I think that is embedded in the city of St. Cloud. And to have this creation of this council is a long time coming, and I think it is the most beautiful thing that's about to come out of the city of St. Cloud. So who are we, and what are we about to get done here? Veterans Council is gonna be a diverse group of men and women, veterans, community members, business owners, large and small, but the drive is all veteran-focused. Our mission is to honor our veterans, preserve our city's heritage as the Soldier City, and create programs that connect our military history with today's community needs, highlighting that our council is not just for veterans, it's for everybody in St. Cloud, but it is veterans-focused on all aspects. Obviously, our legacy here in St. Cloud is Soldier City. Founded as a retirement community for the Union Veterans of the Civil War, that title of Soldier City is not just a nickname, it's a living reminder that service, sacrifice, and unity are the heart of our identity here in St. Cloud. The importance of honoring the past is key, but we are extremely focused on welcoming a new generation of veterans and citizens who now call the city of St. Cloud home. So, a lot of people have asked me, they've reached out, what are you guys gonna do? Honestly, we are at 100 miles an hour right now. So, we are in attempt to reach out to other Veterans Councils throughout central Florida and copy what's good. There's nothing wrong with that. The city of Orlando has an amazing Veterans Council who's highly involved, who's actually sent representatives to our council meetings to kind of see what's going on, to lend a helping hand to the city of St. Cloud. Who would have ever thought that the city limits would have ever, city of Orlando would have ever touched Osceola County, soon to touch probably city of St. Cloud one day? So, what our goal is here is to almost rebrand events here in the coming months and kind of throughout the future. So what you will see is a rebranding of a farmer's market, to where every Sunday, every Sunday, is gonna be themed to represent our veterans in some capacity, including community members. We're in the process of planning our inaugural kickoff coming up just before Veterans Day, which will be absolutely massive. So tonight, I present to you a logo that we are giving to you, the council, for approval that will identify the city of St. Cloud's Veterans Council. This logo has been kind of gone back and forth a few times, we've looked at it. Our goal with this was simple, true, but modern, and that's ultimately the design that we came upon. In closing, I'd like to just commit that we're here to serve, just as those who started here in the city of St. Cloud have, and for those that are gonna be coming after us. My job, a lot of people just know me as a squeaky wheel here in central Florida. My job here on the Vice Chair of the city of St. Cloud is one, one focus, is service. That's it. Whatever our veterans need in St. Cloud, this council's gonna provide it. Hopefully, one day, we can become a resource center so that you don't need to do the hour and a half up Narcusi to the VA or anything like that, to where resources are provided right here in the city of St. Cloud. So I wanna first say thank you to you guys as the council, to the leadership, to the mayor, but I wanna say thank you to the community, because this is gonna be big, and we need community involvement. If you're a veteran, if you support veterans, if you live here in the city of St. Cloud, our doors are open to you. We're gonna be big, we're gonna be loud, Mayor, and I'm excited to have, to start this up here in the city of St. Cloud, it's an honor to serve. Thank you. Awesome. Thank you, Steve. Hey, Steve, stay up here for one minute. I'd like to go ahead and discuss this logo. You guys have a copy of that up here? I know it's on the agenda, but we have to vote on this today, but if we have any comments, we can go ahead and talk about any comments on it right now.
Yes, and I think if he clicks the clicker.
Got it.
Oh, perfect.
It's there. Questions, comments, concerns? You like it, you don't like it, you want me to go back to the drawing board? Okay, I don't have lights, so you guys are gonna have to raise your... Right, there's no buttons?
I love it. I love that you guys incorporated the Soldier City, what St. Cloud represents, so I have no issues on my end.
Thank you. Just a question. Councilmember Gilbert?
Mayor, it looks like the water tower's up there, and it looks like a few other buildings. Are those some of our historical buildings?
I don't believe so, and that was the one comment I was gonna make on that as well. And maybe that's kind of what we can kind of hone in on. Councilmember Urban, do you have anything other than the buildings?
I was gonna say the same thing. I know Deputy Mayor Gilbert's the graphic-as-I-an expert up here, but I, I love it, I think it's great, but if the buildings could reflect maybe some of the actual buildings that are in our city, that, I think that would enhance it even more. That's my other comment.
Okay. See, we've seen, some of us have seen the logo, but I, we can't discuss it with other Veterans Council members, so this is the first time Steve can hear my comments on this. What about City Hall? What about it? What about putting City Hall instead of all those buildings? Or is there any other buildings that y'all would identify with the city of St. Cloud?
Just example, what I was thinking of, of course, what buildings represent the veterans? The veterans' building, the guard, the water tower?
Can I comment back? I would have to recuse myself on that, wouldn't I? Can I comment back? Just, I love the suggestions. If that's what we would like, I have no problem moving forward, but I would ask for assistance on this, just simply because it's not easy to replicate simple graphics to represent a simple building. So if that's the historic, I love the idea of City Hall, the actual water tower, and we can go back to the drawing board, but if it's able, that I'm able to work with the city to get a graphic that we can overlay on that, then that could easily be accommodated. Okay, Dan, I'll let you chime in.
Well, as you know, I've said in all the meetings, and it's been doing a great job so far, your next your next meeting is November 13th.
Right, and that's, that's after, right.
So, really, you either, I mean, I'm, this isn't my field, so I'm not going to go out here. If you want to move forward, I guess, Steve, with a temporary logo, so you have something in place, then maybe you revise after, but you need something in place for your first event, which is going to happen before your next council meeting.
Yes, to the manager.
So you need to get some sort of action right now, tonight.
So we have a graphic artist on staff who's actually standing up, excited to help.
I'm sure he is.
So, if that would help.
My question backward, how would I get it approved? So we can, I'm okay with what Dan was suggesting. We go ahead and approve this as the first round, get it out there, and then if, if we want to adjust it some, then we can do that. No, I would be 100%. I would love to adjust it to where I can get the council to love it, not like it. The rest of it's great. I think it's amazing. I think with all the input from the Veterans Council, I think they really, you all did a very good job with this. So would we be willing to give me, give the council approval for the 2025-year logo? And then I work with your graphic designer to come up with a 26 logo? That would work, at least for me. Like you approve it till the end of this year? Approving this until... Sorry, Mayor. Yes. I would go ahead and, we're going to vote on that in the consent, so we can pull it from that and make that suggestion. But yes, that's my view on that.
Yeah, Mayor, if I, if I may, with the color scheme you have now, Stephen, thank you very much. Great job. Thanks for all you do, as a matter of fact. But you're really not missing anything because it's not detailed.
Right. Just need the shape of it, that's it.
So you really, when we changed it out, because I'm always thinking of letterhead.
This is a swipe-out, swipe-in kind of thing.
Exactly. So, but a great, great job, and I just want to thank you for all your participation. But I yield back to you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So I think the request is to just approve this as a logo till the end of the year?
Yes.
And then maybe in January, you come back with a new logo.
Okay, that'll work. It'll be on the consent agenda, which will be pretty soon in here, and then we'll vote on it. All right. Thank you, Steve, I appreciate you. Thank you, Council, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, community. I appreciate you guys. Yeah, and thank you, St. Cloud Veterans Council. They've dedicated many hours to putting this first event together, November 9th, so if y'all can get out there from 10 to 2, it'll be Veteran Resources, Community Event, Farmer's Market. We hope to do it every Sunday from here on out, from 10 to 2. All right, next up is our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the City Council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. All right, and Council, any items? Of course, the first one, we'll go ahead and pull number one off for discussion.
I'd like to, two, three, if I may, Mayor, and, two and three, if I may, please?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I'd like to pull the items, items five and six on the consent agenda for discussion. I think the City Manager will sign.
Item number 13, in front of the City Council, that's the chamber agreement. In front of the City Council, there's some revised language that when you approve it, it would be including this language, which allows us to continue to partner with the chamber on events and waiver fees for budgeted events such as the Christmas parade. Yes.
It's revised language, okay. Do we need to talk about it any further than that? Vote on it separate?
Not unless you want to.
Mayor, may I please, the council, to talk about number 12 also, too, please?
Where was the, Main Street was polled, right, already from tonight's meeting?
Yes.
And where was that at?
14.
I'm going to go ahead and pull number 16 as well. All right, Councilmember Gilbert, we'll go ahead and start with you.
Okay.
Item number two.
Item number two. So we raised the fees because of taxes are now placed in, correct?
Yes, that was one of the changes that is included here.
The only question I had was the, most things are done on debit cards or Apple Pay or things like that. The processing fee, is that the responsibility of the citizen or the user? Or is it the responsibility of the state?
I believe for Parks and Rec that we absorb that. Stephanie, do we absorb it? Yes, we absorb it.
Because you're looking at putting tax in, and you have to pay government tax. And, you know, a $5 gig, by the time you pay the tax, and processing fee is a $3.20 second thing. Just so the council knows that, when those, there are certain minimums that transactional costs come in with lower fee items, the same as they do with higher fee items, a certain percentage of there, but there are minimums. So just, so we know when we look at fees that that's built in. I just want the council to be aware of that, if I could, please.
We're not going to make, no amending the language.
No, I don't want to. I just want to make us, so when we do look at fees in the future, we take the minimum fees that are given to us by the banks in the process, and emergent services is what it's called during that time, to do that, just to bring it up to the council for future reference.
All right. And resolution number three?
On number two still?
Oh, I'm sorry.
They have, youth basketball is one of the examples. Coaches get a 50% discount, which I agree, it has to be a percent incentive because they do take their time out, they do organize, they do spend time on phones. But what I have to think of is when we did it in the past, there was a three-person limit, a coach, assistant coach, and coordinator or organizer on the specific team. So you can't have seven coaches and 50% discount on seven coaches. So I didn't know if that language, Mayor and Council, if it pleases you that we just put a number on that just for basketball, and we look at each sport for a number of a coach, assistant coach, and I like to call them coordinators or people that get that all fixed up. So if I could put in, if we could put a number on it so it doesn't exceed three, I'd appreciate your thoughts and considerations in that.
Okay, so we're going to vote on that separate to include that language, is that correct? I'll let you make that motion, restate that motion when we, after you talk about number two, maybe?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I'm still on two, and I apologize for my length, but this is after my dear heart. We have the swim in this, and I think Parks and Rec did a great job. If you read the new fees, they did, they covered it all. But one thing I did not see in that is that last time council gave the exception of handicapped people that participate at no cost in the swimming area. And I'd like to see that in part of the words also. But we did vote on that, we did give them that qualifying to do that as handicap, but I'd still like to see that in this, these notes, if it pleases Council.
Yes, sir.
I would ask for your indulgence. Can we move forward with the on-site as and let us look a little bit further at that one issue related to the disabled individuals and the fees? A little bit more, there's, there's some definitional things that we're going to have to work through to basically make sure that we're doing it and figure out how we're going to verify and certify things, those kind of things.
And I certainly appreciate that, Dan, and with all your vast knowledge and experience and tenure, I'm going to let you handle that.
So what you're saying, go ahead and pass it, and then we can amend it.
Yeah, we'll let us look into that one piece, and then we'll, thank you.
Okay.
The last thing I have to say is that, is the $30 an hour per staff, is that all day, any day, each day, no matter if it's Monday through Sunday, from 8:00 AM to 7:50, 9:00 AM? That price is very reasonable for a staff member at $30, because if you look at where you pay benefits, health, all that stuff, it's really a break-even cost. And I didn't know if the overtime came in, if that's something we want to address or just leave it the way it is. Just bring it up to the pleasure of council. And that's all I got for number two, Mayor.
All right, and item number three?
Okay, item number three. Special event cosponsorships. If you look at underneath, we have a packet of information that says, City of St. Cloud, Parks and Rec, special event sponsorship and fee reduction waiver policy. Did you have that in your packet? It's 2025-152R PR event.
Which one is it?
It'd be the 2025-152R PR event sponsorship and fee waiver policy, exhibit A.
Got it.
Okay, underneath responsibility, page three. Tell me when you'd like, if you pull that information up.
This is the existing policy that we are repealing with this resolution.
Perfect, and I think my answer has been answered by the City Manager. If this is going to be repealed, because of the fee reduction, I don't know what the council's pleasure is, but who's going to approve it? And who's going to be able to qualify and quantify it? Those are special things I think council needs to work on. So when we go back to the revision of this, it's so sad. But if you look at the old responsibility fee, and the first paragraph, that's going to be changed, is what the City Manager told me.
This resolution is to repeal the existing special event policy, and what you were just pulling up is the existing special event policy? So this will go away completely with the approval of the resolution as part of the consent agenda?
Thank you for your explanation, City Manager, that was awesome. So that's just a thing I wanted to talk to council. And City Manager answered it 100% for me, so thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, so we're good with three. All right, and Dan, I'll let you speak on number five.
Number five, five and six are companion items, and I can probably talk with them together. These are, they both involve the Edgewater Project. These are tri-party agreements involving Osceola County, the developer, and the city, of course. In front of you, there's two issues, but in front of you are some additional exhibits that are being, that are being included in the agreement. These exhibits will not party or packet, but if the council were to consider this and approve these items tonight, we'd want those exhibits. Those are essentially bond forms that the county is using, and they wanted them to be incorporated in the agreement. Also, with regard to these agreements, the county is still reviewing some of the, what's called boilerplate legal language that's in these agreements. They haven't completed the review. We would, if the council is so inclined, we would request that the council approve the items as is, but with this caveat that our office, working with the City Manager, can remove, review non-substantial changes to the legal languages that the county attorney's office is working on, so that we can get these approved tonight and we can move forward on it, and we don't have to bring it back in the event that the agreements are reworded. So I've talked to Mr. Tomic from the county about it, and, you know, he assures me that these are minimal changes, they're more wording or changes that we just need to work through on the language in the agreement. So when you approve, if you are so inclined for items five and six on your agenda, when you approve them, we'd like you to approve them with the addition of the exhibits that are in front of you, as well as granting our office, working with the City Manager, to make non-substantial changes to the agreement moving forward after we receive the comments from the county attorney's office. Any questions?
So we're not going to pull it? You said just, you're going to work on it?
I'll work it, but if you could, you can approve it as part of the consent agenda without understanding that's how it's, as I just explained.
Okay. Do we, we don't need to pull that and make a separate?
No, I don't think it needs a separate motion.
Okay, thank you. And so you spoke on both of those items?
Yes, it was five and six.
All right, Council, Deputy Mayor Gilbert, resolution number 12.
For resolution number 12, it is the Olay Agreement that we have in front of us. If you guys have it, if not, I have a copy. I've attended the Olay meeting for three straight years. It's a, it's a good meeting. We take a bus there, we meet reps, then we have a reception. When this started in Olay, there was a banquet that was held, and all the reps came to the banquet, all legislators. I just don't know if we're getting our bang for the buck for $30,000, because we usually go up a day early and meet with the same people we're meeting with. That's organized, and it's a 15-minute, they come in, they talk to us 15 minutes, Q and A, and then they're whistled out. I just want the pleasure of the council to look at, is that $30,000 being well-spent? Or can we spend it with our own, or as we make our trips up to Tallahassee individually? Or as a group to ask for those same things? Now, it's good that we get to work with the board, we get to work with the county, we get to work with Kissimmee and St. Cloud. We have one federal, one state, and City Manager, correct me if I'm wrong, that represents Olay. So they're selling Olay projects, not necessarily St. Cloud projects, or Kissimmee, or school board projects. So being the steward of the citizens' money, I just want the council to look at, is $30,000, are we getting our bang for the buck for that? Now, some may say we are, and I would like you all to consider that before we approve this, this money. But that's up to you. I looked at it, I've been three times to Olay. It's a great gathering of constituents that we know, people that we know, but it's five hours on the bus there, five hours on the bus back. And usually, we go early and see all the same folks we see the next two days.
Mayor, if I could just, Mr. Gilbert, could you speak into your microphone? I think they're having trouble hearing you there.
I'm sorry.
This, I got these bright lights in my eyes, I can't see, but I got you. It's right there.
You can pull the mic up.
I will.
No, I understand what you're saying. Would you like to, maybe we vote to remove it? That way, we can get some more information, we can speak with, with the Olay folks and kind of see what we're actually getting?
I would ask at least that, Mayor, to each, like have a, and I did talk to the, the chamber member that runs it.
Mr. Hirsty?
Very good guy, but I just didn't see where the meat and potatoes were. But that's, if we can move it till we get a presentation or something, and get some benchmarks and some really good answers, I'd like to look at it that way, if I could, Mayor.
Okay. Yeah, and I understand that we went up a few days earlier, and you went up with the Olay group on the bus. And I found it beneficial to meet, you know, where everybody was sitting down together with the county commissioners, the state reps, everybody in one room, the City Council members from Kissimmee as well. So there is some value to it, and of course, the next day, you know, they, they bring in a caravan of elected officials, you know, state reps. But yeah, let's, I would agree with that. Let's go ahead and remove it, and then vote on it later, get some more information.
Mayor, can I just make a comment as well before we move on? And I agree with, I had the same questions during my briefing with our City Manager. But from what I understand as well, and I think when we go to Tallahassee, we drove up early as a city, I think that was much more beneficial. But also, from what I understand, is that the Olay organization is much more than just that weekend. It's showing the unified voices, all of the cities and government organizations in Osceola County being unified up in Tallahassee. And I think one of the benefits that we got out of it this year was our fire boat, which I think would have been worth the $30,000 that we paid in. Maybe some years, we don't get that much of a benefit, but I think this year it did. So I just wanted to, since this is the only time that we can talk to each other, I wanted to just keep that in mind, and I'm open to getting more information and learning more about it before we vote on it, though.
Mayor, if I may, Councilmember, I agree with you. I just would like to see what we, what we're getting. And I know they do reports. They also work during times to help push through some causes that we have. I'd just like to see some benchmarks and some timelines as we go forth. That, I yield back to you, Mayor.
All right, City Manager, what's the deadline to sign that agreement?
Well, I don't... Well, I, I don't know that there's a deadline except for the fact that session is earlier this year. So we have a, a meeting later on, I think at the, at the end of October, where we would be selecting our legislative priorities that Olay would, would be sponsoring for the year. And then we have October twenty-seventh, the Osceola delegation. And typically, Olay hosts a lunch with the representatives from the delegation and St. Cloud is invited as an Olay member. So I, I could, I could ask Mr. New Street to come to our October workshop. When Deputy Mayor Gilbert and I met with him earlier today, he did tell me he, he had actually reached out to the lobbyists and that he was trying to get from the lobbyists some, some additional metrics to provide. So I think he was expecting this. I, I do know that earlier this week, City of Kissimmee postponed their decision. So, you know, I, I think having it at the workshop, we could potentially get those answers for you, but we wouldn't have another council meeting until November. So we wouldn't necessarily have the Olay sponsorship of one of our projects until November.
What do you want to do?
Well, mayor, if I may, and I'd like council's opinion in, if we do go ahead with this to get the benchmarks and the metrics, so we know, I just would like us to be more involved when we talk about lobbyists and spending the citizens' taxpayer dollars. I, I don't have the answers. That's why I bring these questions up to council during these meetings because it's the only time we get to talk to y'all. But I'd really like input on this one.
Yeah, I, if we don't do it, then we miss the vote on being represented this year, correct?
I don't know that for the entire year, we would, we may miss the October twenty-seventh delegation meeting. But, I mean, that, that.
The delegation meeting where we all, where you and I went and spoke?
Yes.
About our projects?
Yes.
That's important.
I don't know that it's important to have a lobbyist at that meeting. I think that the best part is the luncheon, the luncheon.
No, you and I will still be speaking up there.
Yes, yes, we will still.
We won't miss that.
Correct, correct. That would, that would not be affected by this decision. We will be, we will be going regardless to present.
When the lobbyist goes up and explains proj, the Olay lobbyists go up and explain projects, we won't be on their agenda, on their list of projects they explain to the delegation?
I, I believe he also gets up and explains at the end of the meeting. I, I don't remember if he actually does. I do know that they do the luncheon for all the representatives and that's the big Olay event. I, I don't, I, I think the only risk is, is the luncheon on October twenty-seventh.
I can miss out on lunch.
Well, if I could, so the, the way, the way the agreement is supposed to work, once the cities and the two cities and the county and the school district get involved, once the parties are all in place, the representatives of those committees who represent the board of Olay are supposed to get together and pick the legislative issues. Mrs. Miller pointed out that that meeting is scheduled for the, towards the end of, later this month.
I'm gonna check right now.
So I would imagine if you did not approve the agreement tonight, you would not have a seat at the table at that meeting. So the city wouldn't be able to participate in those legislative issues that Olay is going to move forward this session. Because that's, that meeting is set up to identify the issues with the, with the idea of moving forward to the legislative delegation and then ultimately to, to Tallahassee when the session starts.
That meeting is October twenty-fourth.
When's our next workshop?
The twenty-third.
We can have a special meeting.
You can set it up as a special meeting to take action that day.
Yep, we'll take action the day before. It's all right. We'll get the facts in the next week and a half or so and then do that.
Okay, we'll do that.
So we'll go ahead and, we're going to pull that for a separate vote?
Actually, why don't we, if mayor, you have the ability to call a special meeting, so since you can do that for the twenty-third, we can remove this off the agenda tonight and have to take no action on it, just put it back on for that special meeting on the twenty-third of October.
Yep, let's go ahead and call for that special meeting October twenty-third then. You want to do it just prior to the, the workshop?
We can do it as part of the workshop.
As part of the workshop? Okay, thank you. And city manager, are you done with that?
Yes, sir.
Yes, mayor.
City manager, item number thirteen.
Oh, I, I mentioned earlier, there's a sheet of paper for the Chamber of Commerce agreement of revised section number five, adding some additional language that just says additionally, subject to an annual appropriation by the city council, as may be necessary, city shall provide further support or sponsorship to chamber in the form of the waiver of applicable use or permit review fees for any chamber special event as part of which city has agreed to participate as an event partner. And that was because we were trying to capture the Christmas parade.
Okay, and now that, that's right into the record. We can just keep that in there and vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go ahead and, let's go back to number one, please. That is the St. Cloud Veterans Council logo. Actually, I think we just leave it on there, right? Because we're gonna, or do we want to vote just to do this at the twenty-twenty-five one and then?
I think that's part of our understanding from the discussion we had earlier, so I think you can leave it on.
Leave it on there?
I mean, just leave it exactly as, take a vote on the consent agenda.
Okay, and then we can amend it next year?
Right, and then we'll, we'll bring it back in January with, for the twenty-twenty-six logo.
All right, thank you. All right, and resolution number, item number sixteen, please. Melissa, can you please come up to the podium here?
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development.
Thank you. First thing that just stuck out, this says that it's located north of Clay Whaley, but this is south of Clay Whaley, correct? The subdivision? These are the townhomes?
I don't have the map in front of me.
These are single-family attached homes, so these are townhomes.
It is south of Clay Whaley.
South of Clay Whaley. Okay. Do we need to fix that?
I think you just made a clarification. So no, I don't, there's nothing that needs to be fixed other than you just clarified that for the record.
Okay. And you and I spoke about this and, and I was just, I have concerns about it being so close to the interchange right now. We have, obviously with the traffic right there, until the new interchange is built, this seems a little, little too close to that. Is there a representative from this developer here today for this project? Yes, sir.
Good evening, council. Sean Hendel, Hansel Walter Associates, representing the applicant.
Hey, Sean.
Hey.
So what's the timeline for construction on this development?
Construction's probably going to take about twelve months and then homes after that, so probably another nine months. So you're probably about two years that you'll see people start living there. And that's if they have a builder. Right now, they don't have a builder.
Right, yeah, and my concern is that, from what I've seen, is it's possibly twenty-seven, twenty-eight. I mean, we don't have a definite date.
Yeah, so the new interchange is scheduled to be done in twenty-eight, but that's all the improvements. So that's all the additional lanes on the turnpike. They'll open the interchange and close the existing interchange ahead of that. They can't open the new interchange until the existing one's closed and they can't remove the existing one because of the weaving analysis. So they've got to get the new interchange opened and then they'll shut off the existing interchange and close that. That'll happen ahead of the lanes and then they'll continue building the lanes and they have until twenty-twenty-eight to finish that. So I'm assuming in my discussions with Junior Davis, that you're probably looking at twenty-twenty-seven opening of the interchange and then a twenty-twenty-eight of all of the lanes on the, on the turnpike being complete. So this project will still be in construction most likely before that interchange is opened. We're ahead of schedule right now, or right on schedule for the extension of Crossbury Parkway. So that will be completed in February of this year to the north side of the wetland. And then the urban center will continue that road north plus the connection to the new interchange. So that'll be open before the interchange is opened.
When you say through the wetland, what about all the way to Tyne to Tohoku? What's the timeline on that? Do you know?
Tyne into Tohoku, that's a separate project with Osceola County. So they did get an appropriation from the state this year for six and a half million dollars. That project's probably, county could answer better, but I'm going to guess since they haven't started design and they're just in a PD and E, that it's probably a couple of years out. So it'd probably be a couple of years after the interchange is open. But I think Ray Stangles here and he could probably address that.
Okay, would somebody from, from the county like to speak on this? About the, regarding the opening of Crossbury? Mr. Tomek.
We're so glad you came.
I was looking at him back there. I was hoping he'd say, yeah, I'll come on up there. He loves talking.
Hi, I'm Dave Tomek, Osceola County. Right now, we're planning on opening the rest of Crossbury Parkway from Tohoku up to the Nolte Interchange by the end of the calendar year twenty-twenty-seven. So all as well in line with when the turnpike stuff opens.
All right. Council, do you have any comments on this? All right, thank you very much.
Go Tigers.
So Sean, it seems like it's all kind of at the same time. By the time these units are ready to sell, that road will be done?
Yes, sir.
That's kind of what we're looking at?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the county has a plan for widening the rest of Clay Whaley, so that'll happen as well with development. So there will be additional improvements on Clay Whaley as well. Making everything that is west of Crossbury Parkway will be a two-lane divided and everything that is east of Crossbury Parkway over the turnpike will be a four-lane divided. Except for the bridge area, that'll be a four-lane undivided.
All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, can we get a motion on the consent agenda minus?
Minus fourteen, fifteen.
That's it.
Yep, fourteen and fifteen.
Mayor, if I could, from Mr. Gilbert's comments on number two, which seemed like a long time ago.
With the exception of the note.
You wanted to limit the coaches' discount to three?
Three coaches per, per, per basketball team, a coach, assistant coach, and a manager is what we call it.
Whatever, whatever, so the limits, okay.
Would you like to make a motion on the entirety of consent agenda with those changes for item number two?
If I may, make a motion with those changes?
Is that number two?
That was number two, yes.
Okay. We have a motion from Deputy Mayor Gilbert. Second from council member Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher, councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
All right, next we have the Citizens Forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address city council. Each person is requested a complete sign-in form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to or soon as they're practical thereafter. The person addresses the council. And first up, we have Michelle Bonsek. Oh, microphone's back there, ma'am.
Good evening. I just came to address the lakefront. The reeds are growing all through the swimming area and I see kids playing in there and they have a toy library. I mean, it's set up really, really nice and that's a beautiful, beautiful place in St. Cloud. And it just seems kind of awful for the reeds to be growing up, so you can't really swim in there and gives room for alligators to hide out. And if there was any way to cut down those reeds so that swimming area was clear, would be great.
I'm happy to have staff do whatever we can according to D E P standards.
May I ask, city manager, what are we allowed to do and what is the water?
I would have to ask our Parks and Recreation Director, Stephanie Holt Camp, to address that. I don't want to misinform you. I think I know.
I didn't want to. F W C has their own rules and I just don't want to do anything that we cannot do.
I just want to ask one question. Don't they have to cut the reeds out of the boat launches so the boats can come out in and out without getting tangled up?
Ms. Holt Camp will be able to answer that. She's, she's the expert on staff for us.
So should I go back and sit down? Yes, okay.
Hi, good evening. Stephanie Holt Camp, Parks and Recreation Director. So, yeah, we, we are issued a permit by Florida Fish and Wildlife to be able to maintain certain aquatic vegetation within our permitted area along lakeshore. So it depends on the vegetation, if it's native and non-native, if we can actually treat it. And then with the rain and the water levels, that also affects how much vegetation is growing, but we'll, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Yep.
And thank you for the great report to Parks and Rec. You guys did a great job.
All right, next up, we have Don Gray.
My name's Don Gray, four oh nine Florida Avenue. Excuse my voice, I have laryngitis. My wife is celebrating. I want to talk to you about Florida Avenue. I don't know whether if I missed it about talking about the rezoning of our street. I didn't see it in the, the agenda and last time I came, they said.
Don, I actually, I think we're going to have it on the agenda here, public hearing number one, the future lane use?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. That'll be after the Citizens Forum.
Okay, good.
You'll have an opportunity to speak on that.
Okay. Anyway, I want to talk to you about what's going on on Florida Avenue.
Is it different than the future lane use?
No, this is just the condition of the, you know, most of the people I talked to on Florida Avenue were not in favor of this bike path that went through because they all said the same thing, that it took away from our small town look. With that being said, it doesn't look all that bad, but what they did was they took two feet of either side of the road away from us. And then what they did was they told us that the cement sidewalk that was winding down through our street was going to be a bike path. Well, it's kind of hard to be a bike path when you're out there walking, walking your dog. This morning, I almost got run over by two electric bicycles and two scooters, just trying to walk my dog. Then when, we were told that the street was going to be, the, the bike path was going to be just that, but then we turn around, we find out that you've made our entire street a bike path. And this morning, again, while I was out walking my dog, I saw an old lady on a tricycle almost get hit by a truck because they're coming down the road and this woman is just innocently pedaling herself down the road and this guy had to go off to the side and she had to swerve up on the sidewalk to be able to get away from this. Now, I know this is probably Chief Gorky's department, but I really want to have it looked into. And then the condition of our road is horrible. From Third Avenue down to, to my house, the road is almost constantly underwater, especially right up there at the head of our block at, at Third Street. It's always underwater on both sides. I don't know whether there's a broken sprinkler or something in there, but it's constantly underwater. Our roads are horrible. We've got commercial traffic that goes down that road as well as people my age. You'd think it'd be the young kids speeding down the road. It's sixty, seventy-year-old guys going down the road. Must be having their second childhood or something. But it's really dangerous. And then on top of that, the, as I said, the condition of the road, you watch these commercial trucks. you watch these commercial trucks going down to crappy bills and you watch the sections of the cement jumping as the trucks go down the road. And I really think that needs to be addressed.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Don. Kevin, can you please come up to the podium? Kevin. You and Jeff playing tic-tac-toe back there? Hey, Kevin. Hey, you sent an email this week that I think Fourth Street, Florida was repaired today. Or yesterday, right?
Yeah, well, because yeah, there was a large dip there. And so I said, we did a temporary repair and then we are still looking at the underground utilities. We'll make sure that that gets repaired also. So we've done a temporary repair and then we are in the process of making sure we have a final repair out there also.
Okay. Are you familiar with any other drainage issues or waters?
Like I said, it's something that we'd be glad to look at. Like I said, with the spring, I wasn't aware of something that stays wet all the time. I'll be glad to go out there and look at that corridor from the entire Florida Avenue from 10th to Lake Shore tomorrow morning and take a look at it. I know we got some pretty extensive rain this afternoon. And so like I said, it'd be a good thing to be able to see where we're at tomorrow morning.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And so was there a bike path in the road or is it just on the trail? Did we designate bikes to go down the road?
I do not know the answer to that. That wasn't one of my projects and I do apologize. I know about the bike path down in the middle, but I'm not, I don't know.
Can we look into that? Just get some information and we can get in touch with Don on that, kinda figure out.
Be glad to.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
If I could say something, Mayor, there is a sign that says, when you turn on Florida Avenue, I saw it the other day, it says, bikes can use the whole road. And I thought it was a little odd. I didn't know why. Maybe it's something we could look into changing.
Okay. City Manager, that's good. Thank you, Don, for bringing that to our attention.
Mayor, if you may, could you address the consent agenda item you just mentioned?
Yes, sir.
You should probably do it.
Yep. We didn't have public comment on the consent agenda. Would anyone in the audience like to speak on any item on the consent agenda? All right. Thank you. All right. Next, we have George Alvarado. Mr. Futsal.
Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, allow me to read this real quick.
Can we get your name and address, sir, for the record? Just for the record, your name and address.
George Alvarado. Thank you.
And your address. You gotta read it in the record.
Eighteen sixty-one Valley Ford Strive, St. Cloud, three four seven six nine.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, good evening. My name is George Alvarado. And I'm the founder and director of the St. Cloud Futsal, a community-based training program dedicated to the development of youth and adult soccer players through the discipline of Futsal. My background and residency, I'm a proud resident of St. Cloud over twenty years, twenty-five to be exact. Deeply invested in the growth, safety, and recreation of our local youth. My work and service history, I'm a retired medical professional with decades of healthcare service. I'm a former firefighter and EMT, dedicated to public safety and service. Experience in leadership, emergency response, and community outreach. Volunteer sports contributions to our St. Cloud community. Volunteer coached to the St. Cloud Soccer Club for ten years. Co-founder of the first St. Cloud Adult Soccer Club, which represented the city of St. Cloud in the Central Floridians Soccer League and won multiple tournaments and league titles. Over twelve years operating St. Cloud Futsal, developing youth and players and adult players. We led St. Cloud teams into the state national Futsal tournaments, including ESPN USA and Futsal World Championships. The program has been based at the St. Cloud Civic Center since 2013. And I'm deeply grateful to the city of St. Cloud and Parks and Recreation Department for opening the doors to our program and supporting our mission. My current requests and goals are, we need additional space and extended hours to accommodate our program youth, our growth. Seeking access to underutilized areas such as Neptune Middle School. Just find out, they have an outdoor Futsal court in other city facilities. The goal is to expand our community training center to provide more structure safe and affordable youth development opportunities in St. Cloud. My closest statement, I'm proud to call St. Cloud my home and have contributed to the recreational and athletic growth to more than two decades. My goal is to continue building the spaces where our youth can train, grow, and represent the city with pride through Futsal and its sportsmanship. Ladies and gentlemen, I've been here, like I said, twenty-five years, begging the city of St. Cloud to help us grow in the soccer community. And nothing has been done in twenty-five years, almost twenty-seven years that I've been here. I beg you, please, it's time to start doing something for the soccer community. They just, I know my time elapsed. Can I have thirty seconds, please?
Absolutely.
The baseball community have been given ten million dollars or something that I was publicized. It's beautiful. I have no complaints. My grandkids play baseball, so I'm very happy for them. But the soccer community has been left out completely. St. Cloud, as you all know, is over ninety-five percent of residential. And it keeps growing and growing. We keep getting phone calls and there's no way to supply. People come to our program, my program, our program, crying literally, knowing that, saying that there's nothing in St. Cloud. There's no soccer complex. They're tired to be traveling to ESPN, Wintermere, Winter Park, Orlando, Lake Nona. Because they have nothing in St. Cloud, except my program and St. Cloud Soccer Club, which is located on Missouri, you all know that. But unfortunately, this soccer field supposedly for the city of St. Cloud, but it's managed by just one club and it's very hard access to get to those fields for training and development. So please, I beg you on behalf of the soccer community and myself, Futsal, to help us grow. Let's do something about our kids because they're really suffering. They're going, they have to go miles and miles in order to do what they love to do. And now people are coming from other cities into our St. Cloud area to open up soccer clubs. And there's nothing we can do about it from inside. So thank you very much for listening.
Yes, sir, George. I've been out there. He runs an amazing program. You said you've been running out of civic center for how many years now?
Two thousand thirteen, almost thirteen years.
Almost thirteen. Yeah. And one of the things I've been finding over the past couple of weeks is we do have limited space in our civic centers or, you know, with the girls cheerleading, they've been looking for space. And of course, with the soccer club and, you know, it's tough. But I promise you, we will continue working with you to try and find a solution. I think it's important to have our kids in the sports programs. I think it's, you run a great program. I know Deputy Mayor over here, he was a big football, basketball coach at Harmony, right? So please continue to work with Parks and Rec.
Yes.
Still continue to work with you, try and find something. You did send me information on Neptune. Hopefully that pans out.
Yes.
So.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thanks for coming and addressing that.
Good night.
Richard McConaughey. Good evening, sir.
Richard McConaughey, fifty-one twenty, Helen Court, St. Cloud. Reason I came is now that the city's overlooking some of these or looking over some of these developments, there's a lot of asphalt and concrete and a lot more water going into the Alligator Lake chain. And there's still only one little canal letting that water out. I've lived there fifty years and I'm not in a flood zone. But things are changing and I think these developers need to retain a little more of their retention water on the east side of town. Because all those developments on the east side end up in Alligator Lake. Still the same old little canal. It's been there forever.
Yeah. Which area specific that you think the water's running into the lakes in?
Well, there's a lot more asphalt and the retention ponds are releasing a lot of water quickly. And I think there's a problem on Hickory Tree Road right now. A big new apartment complex with a self-storage unit. They're pumping water already because they're in trouble. They don't have enough retention.
Okay. So you're saying any future developments near the lake, we need to look into more retention?
On the east side of town, it eventually ends up in the Alligator Lake chain, eventually. And one canal and a lot more retention ponds draining into that lake system. And I think the city, whoever's in charge of retention, we've been using the same system, I think, for many, many years. And there's a lot more asphalt.
Maybe we bring that back up. I know we had a workshop regarding the Alligator Lake and the chain of lakes. Maybe we'll bring that back up in another workshop to address that issue. Because we've talked about designs, you know, developments around there. But that was one that you're the first to bring that to my attention.
It's gonna be a problem sooner or later.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Richard. I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Gordon Brown. Yeah, give us one second, Gordon. We have a microphone coming down to you.
I don't know how well I'm gonna be able to present this, but I'll give it a shot. And so you just flip over this, you know, start on the top and work your way down. Hopefully, I'll do it fast enough. Gordon Brown, three three seven New York Avenue. Wish we could turn off the lights. That's the street I had complained before about how I'm backing up to the grocery store and all that. And basically every day, the dumpsters are releasing this debris. And could you advance the next slide again? Picture, again, that's the other end. And I actually called the City Hall, I mean, the City Refuge Company, Refuse Company. And they said, well, there's not much we can do. But what it is, they need to get a larger dumpster. You gotta force the owners to somehow decide to pay for more dumpster removal. And then I called them here to City Hall and someone suggested, we'll just have them have lids that have to be locked. I assume when I mentioned this last week, nobody from the city has moved on it. How can you go to the next one? But the one thing I stumbled on right there that might help force them to do it, it's out of the St. Cloud code. It mentions right there in the bottom red, you're losing it. But it mentions that the dumpsters have to be screened with an opaque material to keep it from view of the street. I don't know if the city can enforce that. So far, again, nothing's been done and, you know, here's the fun part. Go to the next picture, please. But when they came out, I think it's a coincidence, I hope it is. I got a code enforcement letter that said I've gotta remove, get a permit on my fence. So that's the fence right there. And the reason I had to do that is because I'm not allowed to fence because they say there's no house on the property, no residences on the property, even though I have a relatively large building, more than eight hundred square feet on the property. And so guess who got about five violations? Nothing happened in the trash business. But can you go to the next slide, please? Something went wrong. Oh, yeah. So there's something that's being sneaked into the code. And it allows for a very.
You can continue.
Holy cow. All right. So short story long, I got five complaints about my property, but nothing happened about the city property. But one, that fence was said it was not appropriate, had to be taken down and needed a permit. There's an irrigation system of above-ground garden hoses. They said I gotta file a permit on my irrigation system. There's an above-ground pool there. There's probably about twenty pages. Above-ground pools have to have the same permit process as a below-ground pool. It's almost about twenty pages of permit for above-ground pool. And then the last one, I mean, I'd love to show you the pictures. I had one of these tents canopies up. They said, oh, you gotta take down your temporary shade structure. And I frequently think everything I got was mean-spirited. Something funny is going on with code enforcement. And I'd love to have people look into it. I'd love to have a committee do a review why almost everything that a permit is required for on your property, they say you have to have official drawing made up. Well, typically, that's about twelve hundred dollars worth of cost, which I think is undue burden. If you wanna put up a little kiddie pool, you've gotta submit a drawing showing that kiddie pool, where it is on your property.
Yes, sir.
So they can, they can be mean when they want to and say, hey, you don't have that fancy drawing.
All right. Well, I appreciate your concerns. And what we'll do is we'll go ahead and ask the city manager to speak with staff to sit down with you and go over all of your concerns. Those are all things that need to be handled at the staff level.
Staff, okay. I, well, first of all, the manager of code enforcement apparently doesn't exist anymore right now.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The manager of code enforcement, he's not here anymore.
I am unsure about that position, but if you speak with the city manager's office, they can schedule a meeting with the director.
Okay.
Or with staff.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. All right. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak during the public forum?
Could I ask one last question?
Yes, sir. Really quick.
How would we solve this garbage?
You're gonna speak with the city manager's office. They'll schedule an appointment to speak with staff.
So I actually have the person over code enforcement standing, waiting to talk to you as soon as you move back. She's headed that way.
All right. We'll go ahead and wait for, we still have a quorum? Yes. Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and move on to public hearings. Will the clerk please read item number one?
Final public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash fifty. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, adopting a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment pursuant to section one six three point three one eight four Florida statutes and amending future land use element of the comprehensive plan, project CPA twenty-four dash zero 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 seven, providing for amending of official future land use text and map of the comprehensive plan, following the Planning Commission's recommendations and proof of publication, applicability, and effect, severability copies on file, codification copies on file, scriven as errors and effective date.
Good evening. Melissa Dunklin, Director of Community Development. This item before you tonight is for the amendment of the future land use element of the comprehensive plan. As you all know, Florida statutes requires all cities and counties to adopt and maintain comprehensive plans that are consistent with state statutes. As part of this mandate, we are required to evaluate our plan at least every seven years and update it to ensure consistency with any changes in state requirements to accommodate population growth and other changes in local conditions and to provide proper local planning and effective growth management. This update to the future land use element is intended to establish a framework to address community needs, advance community-driven vision. It also governs the general distribution of uses and the character of land throughout the city. And it promotes growth management practices that align with the community's goals while ensuring compliance with. practices that align with the community's goals while ensuring compliance with state requirements and regulations. So, back in 2017, the city developed a visionary plan titled Envision St. Cloud. And the plan included building blocks to implement the vision. And what those building blocks were intended to do was to create a livable town that embraces both the downtown and lakefront with planning practices that reinforce our history and local character. So, the intention is to balance character and growth, expand employment opportunities, and celebrate parks' lakes' open space, improve connectivity for all modes, and enhance the downtown experience. So, one thing that we want to reinforce is that there's no off switch for growth. It's driven by national, state, and regional socioeconomic factors, and therefore, we are proactively planning for growth and advancing these long-term goals while doing it. And these building blocks are the key foundation of the update of this future land use element. And just to give a very brief overview of this particular effort, we started working on this a few years ago, but since last year, we started focusing heavily on the data analysis, which is required by state law. And before the updates, it helped us identify the needs for this update process. The analysis was followed by community outreach and drafting of our updated policies and future land use map. This included multiple workshops with council, bringing us to this evening, where we hope this will lead to the adoption of the update. But the work does not end here. Once this element is adopted, it has to be implemented through corresponding changes in our land development code. Okay? Many of these changes have been, we've been discussing in the last few months. They are based on a few key findings, as you can see. Most importantly, we need to properly balance our built environment. We have discussed extensively in the last few workshops and presentations, the fact that St. Cloud needs to increase our economic opportunities. Our current jobs-to-housing ratio is .57. That essentially means that for every two homes, there's one job. And so, the current framework or development pattern that the city has will not meet St. Cloud's future housing or employment needs. And our goal is to bring that balance up to one over the next 20 years. And that would mean one job per every one household. Based on current city limits, we need an additional 232 acres of commercial lands. We'll need an additional 580 acres of industrial and office space. And we'll need, or it appears that our institutional needs are met at this time. So, as you all probably know, we are required by state statutes to use the Bureau of Economic and Business Research estimates, more specifically, also known as BIBR. We are required to use the BIBR medium estimates as our benchmark when planning for population growth. These are the county-level projections, and our city corresponds to approximately 15% of that total. We'll discuss St. Cloud's numbers specifically on the next slide. However, the important takeaway here is, from this slide, is that our region will continue to grow. And by 2045, which is our planned horizon, we should expect the county's population to grow by 40% compared to today. And we should also note that growth in central Florida has historically outpaced the medium projection, so these numbers are actually conservative. Since BIBR only estimates population at the county level, we have engaged our own consultant, Metro Forecasting, to develop estimates for St. Cloud. And as you see here, we expect a growth of 60% during the next 20 years. And that's versus the overall county's growth of 40%. And these numbers do not account for annexations. So, as we continue to strategically annex areas, the corresponding growth will shift from the county's totals to our share. Okay? A second component of this population estimates employment. If we continue on the same trajectory, our jobs-to-housing balance may slightly increase to .7 jobs per household by 2045. But of course, that falls short of the city's goal of having a one-to-one jobs-to-housing ratio. Okay? So, there are consequences to ignoring growth management. We can't by law. But if we did ignore managing the growth, then it could cause increased cost of housing for rent, sorry, increased cost of housing and rent for new and existing residents. It could delay homeownership for families. It does increase commute times and transportation costs. Businesses may struggle to attract and retain workers, and it will be a strain on public programs, infrastructure, and services. So, considering everything we have just discussed, here's a quick overview of our proposed changes. We have changed our future land use categories to better align with the goals of the city. And so, we have adopted, or we are proposing to adopt, the JPA future land use categories. And those categories are intended to match county designations that are within the JPA area but outside of city limits. So, as properties annex into the city, council has the flexibility of accepting the entitlements as are existing in the county, rather than us always having to go through the PUD processes to accept plans that are outside of the mixed-use districts but already have development approvals. And then we have consolidated our private institutional, which essentially is the office use, with our industrial use, into the employment future land use. And that is to identify areas for diverse economic activity. The institutional future land use consolidates public, civic, and community into, community services into a single designation. And the neighborhood commercial future land use is a new designation that allows limited commercial uses and will serve as a gradual transition for Lake Shore Boulevard and Florida Avenue corridors. I'll get into that in more detail on a later slide. Okay? And the JPA infill centers are also existing centers within the county's land development code, sorry, within the county's future land use element and within the joint planning area of the county. So, this would allow us to assign the same land uses on properties as we annex them into the city. And the JPA medium density and intensity is also an existing future land use designation in the county that has been designated on certain lands in the joint planning area. So, those two are for the ease of transition from the county into the city for those centers that serve commercial and employment needs with supporting housing. Okay? This is the future land use map as it exists in 2025. This slide highlights the proposed changes to the map. And this slide shows the newly proposed map with all the changes. Here, you'll notice that there were only six changes since our last workshop in August. We made these changes based on council direction received and to fix mapping errors that were discussed during the workshop. I can go through each one if you want, or I can-
Yeah, just briefly. Can you just go through the list?
Sure. Yes. So, number one, we corrected a mapping error from employment to medium-density residential and institutional. And that was directed at the workshop, or I think right after the workshop. Number two, we corrected a mapping error from high-density residential to medium-density residential. The parcel is currently under review and under council action, so we didn't want to change it. And number three is, we corrected mapping errors. There were three sliver parcels that needed to be updated following the ownership, because they were all under the same ownership of the larger parcel that they were adjacent to. So, we just made that map correction. And number four, we changed the designation from low-density residential to employment as requested by the owners prior to that August workshop. Number five, we removed the neighborhood commercial designation and reverted the parcel back to the current land use of low-density residential. And that was directed at the August workshop. And then, number six, at Puffin and 13th Street, we reverted the employment land use designation back to commercial, because that one was also under current application. Okay? So, now we'll talk more about the neighborhood commercial. So, along Florida Avenue, we are proposing to allow accessory commercial units and professional offices only. And we want to ensure that the uses are integrated thoughtfully and in a compatible way, so the development approvals for Florida Avenue corridor will require, will be required to go through the conditional use permit process, which is a council action. So, they will have to bring an application to change their existing use before city council to take into account any parking requirements, any buffering requirements from their neighbors, any other impacts that they may have on their neighbors. This process, this conditional use permit process, allows citizens to provide feedback at a public meeting before council, before any approvals are granted. For Lake Shore Boulevard corridor, we have limited that between Massachusetts Avenue and Michigan Avenue. And those parcels in between Mass and Michigan will be allowed to have bed and breakfasts, cafes, and restaurants only. Okay. Here's the table from our element that basically summarizes the intensity and density for each land use category. Within this update, there are five overarching goals, and I'll go through each one briefly. Goal number one is to promote sustainable land use planning, establishing comprehensive plan use, sorry, comprehensive land use planning network, establishing future land use designations, but most importantly, to protect natural resources. One thing that I want to make sure is understood, in this update, we have included for any lakes within the city limits, we have created a lake protection area buffer, which will require a minimum of 250 feet, average of 500 feet, buffer along any lake in the City of St. Cloud.
Is that something that we changed recently?
No, it's been there the whole time.
Has it? Okay.
It was requested about a year ago, I think. So, as soon as it was requested, we put it in there. Okay? And goal two consists of objectives and policies to utilize the planning framework established in goal one to achieve the city's high-planning aspirations. Goal three promotes a high-quality built environment, which promotes community connection, allows for successful businesses, and maintains a high quality of life for residents. Goal four establishes how the city will coordinate with Osceola County to plan for growth within the joint planning area. Goal five includes a list of 26 specific actions for the city to take to implement the goals, objectives, and policies of this updated element. Many of these involve future updates to the land development code. This update is critical to the success of this future land use element. Okay? So, staff recommends approval. On August 19th, 2025, Planning Commission motioned to recommend approval. There was a split vote, which results in no recommendation. Staff is requesting approval of ordinance number 2024-50 for the adoption of the future land use element of the comprehensive plan. This is a city-initiated statutorily required update, so staff is available if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you, Melissa. And would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? First up, we have Laura Harris. Sorry, we got a few items on, a few people signed up. It's a larger council chamber, isn't it? Longer walk-up.
Good evening, Laura Harris, 613 Ohio Avenue here in St. Cloud. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I want to talk about the commercialization of Florida Avenue. I've lived here for over 20 years. When I first got here, downtown was very vibrant. It was a great place to go. And it's very disappointing now to go down to New York and see empty storefronts and businesses that have left. It's so disheartening. And to think that we want to put commercial businesses over on Florida, when we cannot fill New York Avenue, is just, it's beyond me. I absolutely love the Florida Trail. I walk it as much as I can. It's like walking on a park. It's beautiful. And to think, we may put businesses there with asphalt parking lots and more cars. It's just such a disappointment to me. I want to just keep it and love it the way it is. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Melissa, I have a question on that. Please. Regarding Florida Avenue, so every one of these units, they would need parking spots on their properties.
Correct. Depending on the use. And it could be like a commercial accessory unit or a home-based business that may not require any additional parking or minimal parking. But we built a mechanism in this update to where any individual business that wants to locate there has to come before council with a plan to show how they can accommodate the business that they're locating there.
Okay. And I know these lots are not that large going down there. So, are these going to be pull-in and back-out? I mean, do we allow that? Just back out onto our roads?
Typically, when people park in their driveway, there are no rules that I'm aware of. Maybe the police department or Public Works may have some feedback on that. But there are no rules that you can't pull into your driveway and then reverse out of it.
Right. For residential. But if we're doing commercial, aren't those typically, you pull in and you got to come out?
Well, I think the accessory commercial unit may be something that needs to be clarified. Because I think maybe there's a bit of a confusion that we're expecting to see the entire house turn into a commercial structure and then require, you know, one parking space for every 200 square feet, which I don't think is what the intent is here.
Maybe if we can dive a little deeper on Florida, on what that entails. And I know we've all talked about that, but maybe for the citizens to-
Sure, yes. So, an accessory commercial unit can be interior to the home or exterior. So, just for example, if I have- So just for example, if if I have an accounting business and I have clients come to my home for for the purposes of that business, then on the exterior of the home, there would not be any appearance of a business. However, if that type of use will require additional parking, then the applicant would have to demonstrate to the city that they can accommodate that parking. And if they can't, then they can't have the business there. And and on the flip side of that, if it's like an accessory commercial unit that's on the exterior of the home, such as like a garage or something, if I am a contractor of some sort and I store my business equipment in this unit in the back, or if I were a shoe repair person and I had people to bring me their shoes and they would meet me at my outdoor garage to exchange that, and I can do my work in the garage there, then those are the types of businesses that we are expecting there. That does not, that does not mean that if I were a accountant, that I could not convert the interior of my home to to an office space. But what that would mean is if they do do that, they have to upgrade the home construction-wise to meet all ADA and building department requirements, maybe need to be sprinkled. And any any code requirements that we have, we would review for. But they would also have to come before council and demonstrate to staff. And we would make a recommendation to council whether or not they could meet those requirements. And if they cannot meet those requirements, then I'm sure council would deny it.
Okay, and there's going to be a moratorium on any any zoning changes down Florida as well?
Senate Bill 180 does not allow us to do moratoriums anymore.
So there will be no moratorium on any, well, you never told us, Dan. I'm joking. We did talk about that. But so not none at all to come up with the the standards?
The law, Senate Bill 180 specifically prohibits moratoriums of any kind.
Okay, so we need to come up with the standards before any zoning, we accept any zoning applications on this, correct?
We have standards in place right now. And through the conditional use permitting process, we will ensure that they are meeting all of our standards. And if if we need to add more standards, which I'm sure we will, as soon as this is adopted, if it is approved by council today, the next step is to roll into updating the land development code, and we'll do that immediately.
Okay, so this also applies on on Lake Shore. There there's not going to be a moratorium. Once this future land use passes, somebody could come in for a zoning change.
That is correct.
Okay.
But the council, until the new zoning is created, the council is not required to approve of rezoning.
Okay, so we've not created the zoning yet?
Right.
Under the the future land use?
Right.
Perfect. Okay. Okay, so this would allow somebody that, say, right now couldn't, if they had, say they were an accountant and they 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 wanted to have one of their customers come to one of their their home, I guess, to get their items or their paperwork, they're not, right now, nobody's allowed to operate out of their home, a business like that, right?
Well, there's a, yes, you are correct, because the home-based business requirement that typically residential has a couple of conditions, and one of which is you can't see customers on site, the client. So yes, you are correct.
But this would allow that?
This would allow that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, council, do y'all have any any questions, Melissa?
Just if I may, Melissa, you here?
Sorry.
I don't have buttons.
I know, I know, and I was waiting to get done.
So sorry.
When when we looked into this in prior months, I think council was aware, you know, changing a property to make it ADA compliant, and I talked to the fire chief about this, just the sprinklers alone and 800 to 1200 square feet is going to be a $70,000 to $100,000 to convert that to a, if I was going to go into a retail business, I don't know if I'd sink $100,000 into 800 or 1200 square feet to make it ADA compliant. And that is also with wheelchair accessibilities and things as such as that. Not saying I do it, but Mayor, I truly believe there are people already doing small businesses in their houses. I I'm not saying right or wrong, but I think that does exist in today's world, especially COVID and COVID and beyond. People are using their third bedroom for an office space and doing business like that. But I just want to look at the realistic picture of turning one of those houses and to a full-blown retail, it's going to be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Just just stating that, there's nothing, if someone has it and wants to do it, but it just doesn't seem reasonable to me that somebody's going to go ahead and build a business on Florida Avenue. I yield back to you, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
I do like the idea of the bed and breakfast off of Lake Shore, but I'm not a fan of Florida Avenue, you know, turning that in, because I just worry about the parking. I mean, there are already residents that stayed there and already complain about parking now. So turning something into a neighborhood commercial would just be mean more complaints about parking and stuff. So that would be my big concern on Florida Avenue.
There there is the possibility or the authority of council to approve this with any conditions that council sees fit.
All right, more we have more citizens that want to speak on this item. Chris Sheets.
How you doing? We came as a group to offer our land for employment to help the city and never about this comprehensive plan. So if this plan gets shot down, we'd still like to move forward with making our land commercial, industrial, to help the city.
What was, what's your name and address for the record, please?
Chris Sheets, Eastern Avenue.
What's your address?
2330.
Thank you. And so 2330, you you filled out an application to the city to for a zoning change?
We came with Mr. White, and we all came up there before and had a couple of meetings with you guys.
I think he's part of the existing proposed change to Employment Center. I think what he's asking is, he still wants that to happen. If Florida Avenue doesn't happen.
Yeah, I support it. And if it doesn't, this plan doesn't go through, we still support changing our land use to better the city.
Yeah, it's it's a big map. There's a lot of changes everywhere. And so yours, you do support your area with the changes? Okay, thank you, sir. Kathleen Silva.
Hello, good evening. My name's Kathleen Silva. I live at 700 Florida Avenue. Thank you. My plan tonight was to find a way to convince you to amend the comprehensive plan. It just does not align with St. Cloud's small-town values. I'm going to ask you to please say no, vote no to the rezoning of Florida Avenue and Lakefront Drive. I'd like to see that we focus more on restoring Soldier City, supporting St. Cloud Veterans Council, enhancing our lakefront, and helping our local businesses and what I call the downtown business district to thrive. There are, you know, a lot of buildings that are in disrepair that, you know, are used to be for rent, like Frankie's Restaurant for one. It's 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 been empty now for years. You know, we need to find ways to to get those buildings back up and running where we can have more businesses in that little business section and not mix businesses, you know, with with the homes that are our neighborhoods. You know, in the future, you know, like you said, you know, bed and breakfast on on Lake Shore, you know, that might be nice in some of those, you know, bigger homes. But again, that has to be something maybe later on. Adding all of this together at once is just, you know, too confusing. It's just too much. And then if I might, I'd like to piggyback on what Don Gray had referred to earlier as the traffic on Florida Avenue. It is atrocious, the way people just fly down there, because the road is, you know, one way, the other way, you know. The speeding is crazy. You know, we've invested so much money into, you know, this nice walking path and encouraging people to come down and and use the lakefront. It it's only a matter of time before, you know, somebody gets killed on there. So I'd like to see if we can find a way to slow down the traffic, whether it's to lower the speed limit or or maybe to, you know, add some speed bumps. Again, you know, we we've made it so beautiful, and we've asked people to come there, but but we're really not protecting them when you've got people just, you know, thinking it's, you know, they can go 50, 60 miles an hour, especially at night. I mean, they just, it becomes a speedway at 2:00 in the morning. And I said, thank you.
Thomas Richards.
My name is Thomas Richards. I'm a 38-year resident at 1517 Pennsylvania Avenue in St. Cloud. This area is identified as high-density residential and a new future land use designation. I'm here to express my concerns regarding the potential negative impacts of high-density residential development in the downtown adjacent area of St. Cloud. We saw catastrophic flooding caused by Hurricane Ian in 2022, which serves as a stark reminder of St. Cloud's vulnerability to extreme weather events. Nearby city of Kissimmee experienced devastating flooding. Homes and businesses were inundated due to overwhelmed drainage systems and the region's low-lying geography. St. Cloud's own storm drain system is already inadequate to handle heavy handle rainfall and has experienced in the street flooding like the rainstorms we had today. Development in this area would exacerbate this this issue, increasing impervious services, rooftops, and parking lots, which prevent natural water absorption and place additional strain on our outdated stormwater infrastructure. Very few streets in this area have a curb infrastructure to even properly route stormwater to the drains. Without significant upgrades to the drainage system, new developments would worsen flood risks for both new and existing residents, potentially leading to property damage, economic loss, and threats to public safety. In addition to flooding concerns, the traffic situation in the downtown St. Cloud area is already strained. Key roads such as 10th Street, 13th Street, and even 17th Street are already experiencing congestion during peak hours. The influx of additional residents from high-density housing would significantly worsen this problem. More households mean more vehicles, which would increase traffic delays, compromise road safety, strain parking availability in the downtown area. And the charm of our historic downtown walkability, small-town feel, tree-lined streets, and accessibility could be undermined by gridlock and overdevelopment, deterring visitors and impacting local businesses. Proponents of high-density development argue that increased population will naturally attract more businesses. If this was true, we'd already see a doubling of businesses in this past decade. While we've seen some business growth, it's mostly retail and not high-paying tech jobs. I urge the city council to prioritize infrastructure improvements, particularly stormwater drainage system, before considering high-density residential projects in the downtown area. Many of the roads in this area have been ignored for decades, and I stand as a witness to the neglect. We have a mix of patched asphalt and concrete roads. Many still have holes left over from the recent Toho Water takeover. Preserving the quality of life in St. Cloud for residents and maintaining the unique character of our downtown should guide all development decisions. And I'm worried that the 70.
You can continue, sir.
Okay, I'm worried about this 70-block area could be developed and quickly overwhelm the city's ability to adapt. And thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Thomas. Don Gray.
Don Gray, 409 Florida Avenue, St. Cloud. I just want to address not only the traffic that is going on, but since they did put that walk path in, when it rains, we end up with a river on Florida Avenue. I mean, if I had a small boat, I could just go out there and ride it all the way to the lake. Now, with that being said, the one thing that I have not heard in all this planning and zoning are the young people that bought their first home, someone who has bought a forever home, some older person who has bought a retirement home that thinks that they're going to come here and spend the rest of their their days in a beautiful St. Cloud, Florida. Now you're going to try to turn it into a commercial residential. And I think both of, you know, all of us know that someone's going to come in here and they're going to present that they want to put a parking lot in their front yard, what used to be a front yard, put a parking lot in their backyard. And if I did hear correctly, it's okay at that point if I have a commercial business and I want to park my trucks in the back of my house, because now I'm a construction business. What this is going to do is it's going to rob St. Cloud of that small town, which most people, if they look at it, that's really what they're looking for. They're not looking for Orlando. And I really hope you guys would stop trying to make us into Orlando and let us be St. Cloud, Florida. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Don. Jose Martinez. I assume this was the one you wanted to speak on?
Yes. Jose Martinez, 1109 Lake Shore Boulevard. First of all, I mean, I love these future land use. I think we got one. The reason why we're here with all these issues in St. Cloud, because we lack of a responsible future land use, right? But now I have to say this, we need to bring businesses, small businesses, here to St. Cloud. So I notice we can all be afraid with small-town living. I've been here over 20-plus years doing business, and I see the city grow. But I can see that I see a lot more houses coming in. We need to give a chance to small businesses to come to downtown and actually do business. Of course, there are going to be hiccups. We definitely need to plan for it. But putting too many roadblocks at the beginning of it, when are we going to get small businesses? We can get keep getting more houses and keep complaining about getting thousands of houses for not allowing businesses to come here? Small business. We're not talking about nationwide companies. Lake Shore, I understand the issue with Florida Avenue completely. I think we definitely have to look at it. And hopefully, little by little, we can all grow this. But we need to look at in St. Cloud that can attract more small businesses. I'm expanding. I'm here. I'm investing my saving, my life, and my whole family into growing in St. Cloud. That idea in Lake Shore, absolutely. I'm there. We want to build a better Lake Shore. How? Quality coffee shop, quality small bed and breakfast. But we need to allow businesses to come in, responsible people within the city, organic growth, right? Just like me, being here over 20-plus years, there's more people. And putting moratorium on top of moratorium, let the business drive. At least give them a shot. Let small businesses come in with, what is $10,000 or $500,000 in my case, to buy something, to build something, where we can bring quality people to give their job. Because we don't want only people to come here and leave. We want them to also entertain themselves. We have a beautiful Lake Shore. Can we optimize that, where we can allow more small businesses to come in and invest and allow people not just to move in here as a bad place to leave, but also to enjoy themselves and put more place, more businesses? I also heard other people within the next 30 seconds say, hey, in New York Avenue, people is moving out. Therefore, we should not expand more businesses. I think the more small businesses we bring into St. Cloud, the more people will come and visit our beautiful city. So I ended up with this. I think we got a beautiful plan, at least for the Lake Shore. I'm vested in. I want more people to come and invest. I love Winter Garden. I love Winter Garden, definitely hate Orlando, but there's more beautiful, small cities that have done it right. And I think that's a great start, and we should not do no moratorium. We should let small business come and drive in our city. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yeah, I think our city attorney said that we, we're, by law, we can't do the moratorium. So I think you're good to go on that. Thanks, air conditioning. All right, Betty Dampke. Betty Dampke, come on down.
Is this me?
No.
Okay. Oh, good evening, Betty Dampke, 4776 Hidden Heights Trail. Can I just, one thing that quick, when you're speaking among yourselves, please speak into the microphone. If you turn your head this way, we, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Betty.
Not only here, but in the regular chambers.
Yes, ma'am.
Especially you, Ken.
Well, thank you, Betty.
You turn and talk, you turn and talk this way.
I'm going to go home and work on that, okay? I'll come back next, next week. There's a little bit of, uh, noise difference here, but I, I promise you, I'll work on that. Thank you very much.
I, I know I'm getting old and hard of hearing, but-
What?
Uh, no comment. I'm addressing, of course, this future land use map, but also a couple other items, all in one packet, that's going to be coming up further on the agenda. During the planning commission meeting, extensive discussion was given to the fact that this area of Long Lake, along Lakeshore, Rommel Road, will be changed to a, um, medium-density zoning, which allows 18 units per acre. Think about it. 18 units per acre. That's not what is up there now. It's what could be. This will open the gates for future medium-density changes all the way to Chisholm Park and other connecting areas to Lakeshore and Florida Avenue. Think of this, a developer could come in and buy three, four, five houses or more, bulldoze them, and the next thing you're going to know, you're going to have an apartment, a condominium, a resort. The Lakeshore will not remain the same. Now, you can sit there and you can tell us it will never happen, but what are we doing right now? And what do you do every time you sit at that podium? You change the future land, you change the zoning destination from agricultural to this or that to that. It's done every day, every time you sit up there. So you, you're not always going to be there. We can have some really rogue commissioners, uh, council members come in here. You're opening Pandora's box if you approve this as is, and I sincerely hope you'll reconsider because we need our Lakeshore. It's beautiful. It's our God-given nature up there. And the future expansion that is positive of going on up to Chisholm Park, it should remain as is, not with commercial.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yeah, we, we have modified the, the plan to, uh, we, we took away the, the medium-density residential, everything from Massachusetts, I'm sorry, from Michigan East to Massachusetts West. So that is no longer on there. John White.
Thank you, counsel. My name is John White, 2220 Eastern Avenue. Um, I've lived on this property for 50 years. My family's lived on it for the last, since the 40s. And one of the things that, you know, if I do ever sell it, I don't have to sell it. So whatever land use, future land use you put on it, I don't have to sell it for anything I do. I can live there the rest of my life. But if I do sell it, I want to improve the city of St. Cloud in a way to help the city improve for future aspects and all that. And I think that's where some of us are getting, um, not understanding what this future land use is. We don't have to sell our land. We don't have to sell our house. If we want to, then the opportunity's there to possibly make as much money as you can off of your property that you're selling. But as, as of right now, all y'all are doing is saying, "Hey, this is what the future 2045, 2050, this is what we're looking at. This is what we're, the future of St. Cloud needs to go." I agree with you. I'm 100% positive behind it. And, you know, I think the city residents are not quite understanding that they're thinking, "Oh, people's just going to come, start putting in commercial businesses on Lakeshore or on Florida Avenue." You have to be willing to sell your land or sell your house. You don't have to. It's up to you. And if there's a property comes up for sale and you don't want it to go into a commercial, find somebody to buy it next door. It's an opportunity to in, improve our city. I just came into the city within the last month. So this is a new avenue for us. I've always been in the county on agricultural land, and now we're in the city. So it's a new thing for all of us, but like I said, I've lived there since the 40s, and it's a great opportunity for us if the city wants to change my future land use to employment or commercial or whatever. It's a great opportunity if I ever decide to sell. I don't have to, and I'm not planning on it anytime soon, because I love this town. So thank you for your time and thank you for your effort.
Yes, sir. Thank you, John. Yeah, what JJ says correct, that, that you don't have to change the zoning of your house. You can keep it the same. This is, it's the future land use on it. It's not, it doesn't require you to change the zoning. But first, before I make more comments, anyone else in the audience like to speak on this item? Uh, Richard McConaughey.
Talking about Florida Avenue right now, there's a lawyer's office.
Yes, sir. You can just walk right on up. Yep. Uh, name and address for the record again, please.
Richard McConaughey, 5120 Helen Court, St. Cloud. There's a lawyer's office and a financial planner office on Florida Avenue now. They have four employees. You know how many parking spots they have? Four. So guess what? And that's going to happen all the way down Florida Avenue. You're going to have cars, 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 because they've got four employees. And where else does anybody park? Just think about that.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and that, that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around as well, is the, the type of businesses that, um, that will be allowed in there. And I, the fact is, we haven't created the zoning for that to, to allow those types. Is that, that correct, city manager?
Correct. Oh, I'm sorry.
Melissa, oh, sorry. Did you want to speak? Jackie? I didn't see you raise your hand back there earlier.
I was not going to, but I can't help myself. Good evening, counsel. Jackie Fracchione, 4872 Chisholm Park Trail. I was going to keep my mouth shut and just listen to what everybody was saying, but there is something I want to bring to y'all's attention. I grew up in Orlando. I came to St. Cloud 37 years ago to get away from Orlando. But I grew up in a very nice area, Conway Estates, Lake Conway. We lived on the lake. We jet-skied, we sea-dudeed. We grew up in a very nice life on the lake there. All the houses over on Lake Conway, if anybody's been back there, were little block homes that all of our friends and family grew up on. Average homes, just like in St. Cloud on the state streets. Go back there now, they didn't let their neighborhood go commercial. Those homes got bought by new homeowners that took those block, three-bedroom, two-bath homes and turned them into these beautiful million-dollar estates. That's what Lake Conway is now. All the side streets, not just the people on the lakefront, the people on all the side streets are big, beautiful, million-dollar homes. That's the economic growth we need in St. Cloud. We need those high-dollar homes to come into our city limits. Not just one development on 10th Street that's coming in. Those homes that are down there now, what is they say in real estate? The number-one property is lakefront, lakeview and oceanfront. We have that. Let it stay like it is, and the future people that buy there will turn those three-bedroom, two-bath block homes into beautiful million-dollar estates. And then you're creating a whole other different area in St. Cloud versus allowing businesses to come in and who knows what's going to happen? You're going to open up a whole can of worms with that, because the parking is just the first issue you're going to have. I would like to see St. Cloud end up looking like Lake Conway or Windermere, another area I grew up in. Beautiful lakefront homes, all multi-million dollar homes. That's what we can have at our lakefront. We don't need little bed and breakfasts. You want to open a bed and breakfast? You can do it in town. We need more businesses in town. We're losing businesses here in the city on a regular basis. I know of five businesses, personal friends of mine, that have closed their doors in the city limits. So we need to concentrate on that. Let's leave our residential for those homes to turn in from what they are now into million-dollar estates. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Um, one thing I wanted to touch on, that bed and breakfasts are already allowed in, along Lakeshore? That it's part of the, in the residential code right now?
Yes, we have a bed and breakfast district. And, and mayor, can I ask Melissa to put the map up of the changes? Because there's not much of lakefront that's currently proposed for any change this evening. I, I thought it, it might help with some of the conversation. I think there is definitely, this has been a multi-year process. So, um, you know, I, I just would like the opportunity for everyone in the audience to be able to see what actually is changing.
Mayor, could I turn my light on?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, so thank you, everybody, for, for, for speaking on this tonight. I, I understand, uh, where everyone is coming from. Uh, there were a few points that really stood out to me, and, uh, one of the things that I've been very adamant about since I've, uh, gotten into this position is that we need more jobs in our city. We need more high-wage jobs in our city. And one of the statistics that really stood out to me that Melissa said was there is one job for every two houses in St. Cloud. That's unacceptable to me, right? That is not a sustainable city to have one job per two houses. So what this plan does, and, and, and we can talk about Florida Avenue and Lakeshore, um, to be honest, that's negotiable, but we don't need to throw the, the, the baby out with the bathwater here and, and, and throw out all the employment centers and, and areas that will bring jobs, and in particular, high-wage jobs to our city, so that people aren't lining up on the turnpike and taking two hours just to get on the turnpike to go to Orlando to work. So that, that, I think, is what this is going to help us do. The other thing that really stood out to me, too, is we're talking about, as Deputy Mayor Gilbert said, $100,000 just to, just to transform a, a property, to make it into a business. That's a staggering number to me. Uh, one of the gentlemen here, I think Mr. Martinez mentioned, we need to quit making it so difficult for people to do business. Uh, I, I understand some of these regulations, fire sprinklers, these are state codes. Man, government needs to get out of the way and allow business to thrive in every community, not just St. Cloud. That's my opinion. And we just, we need to be encouraging jobs and businesses in our city, and, and that's why I think, uh, this map is so important. But I'll, I'll yield back to you. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, just a few questions. Melissa, um, on Florida Avenue at the present time, and you don't have to give me exact numbers, but, uh, from Lakeshore to 13th Street, uh, there are currently active businesses on Florida Avenue, are there not?
Correct. There, there are.
Okay. I, Lakeshore, I counted 19 dwellings that would be, uh, open for small business, uh, just from the, from the map. I know right now, and, and I went online, I'm sorry, Betty, is that better? I'm sorry, forgot again. Uh, I went online and in the Kissimmee-St. Cloud area, there's over 1,000 bed and breakfasts available. There are bed and breakfasts in St. Cloud right now, but they're not business taxed. Okay? If we want jobs and we talk to, to Councilman Urban, well, we get this passed, and we're going to go out and business tax the people that are running bed and breakfast, the people that are doing these kind of things, because it is happening. It's happening today in the city. But without a stronghold on it, I think, uh, it'll continue to happen with or without our blessing. Just my comment on that. I'm from resident, not here, but I've been here for 36 years. But where I resided, every corner was a corner grocery store. Everybody had a, a car tire change in every corner. So there was multiple businesses within the community that worked. I don't see anybody buying six or seven houses in Florida Avenue, tearing them down to put a, um, a Walmart, Walmart grocery store. I just don't see it. But I do see ba, uh, business tax receipts. If we allow businesses to come down, there will be revenue, as the lady said. We definitely want to continue to dress up Lakeshore. We definitely want to continue to dress up all these places. The biggest thing that takes is money. And with businesses, you have tax receipts, and that gives you money to expand. That's just my thought on that, but I'm open to anything the council, um, would, would like to discuss right now. But small businesses are 70% of the heartbeat of America. I yield back to you, mayor.
All right. Thank you. Well, I, I do know we have a number of stakeholders, property owners on Lakeshore here that, that have a desire for, uh, restaurant cafes, that type down there. I know the city of St. Cloud owns a few properties here. Florida's a tough one. Florida Avenue is, um, without knowing what the standards are, that it, it proves a little difficult of, as to what it's actually going to look like. And, and I'd like to really discuss with counsel, because we're going to be the ones voting on the, the actual zoning and, and the allowable uses. So what do y'all envision along Florida? Are we talking about accounting offices? Are we talking about, um, realtors? Or what are we, what are we looking at here?
Without, I mean, without knowing what is actually going to be there, um, I'm just concerned about the parking on Florida is my concern.
All right. I mean, because also, we're going to, we're going to be talking about how many parking spaces per, it'd be based on square footage, I, I'd assume. Correct?
Yes. So parking right now is based on square footage, and, um, we just want to remind counsel that every business that may propose to come there will have to come before counsel, what they plan that demonstrates that they have adequate parking. And if they can't demonstrate that they have adequate parking, then council has the authority to deny that conditional use permit, and then they will not be able to locate their business there. And the idea is to have that incremental change over time. It, we don't expect, um, and we've never, I've never seen that happen in, in my career, to where when you change a land use, all of a sudden, 100 people decide to open a business there. It's an incremental change over the next 20 years on a case-by-case basis. It's an incremental change over the next 20 years on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to speak on this item? Yes, sir, Gordon Brown. Oh, yes, ma'am, did you need to speak?
Yes, just two questions.
Yep, just please come to the podium. Name and address for the record, please.
Barbara Richards, 1517 Pennsylvania Avenue, St. Cloud. Is there any way, if we decide not to sell our house and they're developing, like on Pennsylvania, high-density? Is there intimate domain where we're going to be forced to do that?
No, ma'am. That's, there is no eminent domain whatsoever with this. That is, this is just change in the future lane use to allow in the future, if you want to come forward and request a zoning change, you don't have to.
Also, do we have to tell prospective buyers, if we decide to sell our house, about what you all are going to be doing in the future?
We're not going to be doing anything else in the future. So, it's, if you want to do something in the future, or you could tell the prospective buyers, hey, you have the ability with the future lane use to go in for a zoning change, to allow them to increase the density on their property.
But we don't have to mention it?
No, well, they can do their own research.
You need to be careful about that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to-
When anybody sells a home or any sort of property, it's up to the buyer-
Yeah.
-to do the due diligence and to figure out what the future use, land use, and future zoning are for all properties, so. And the seller does have somewhat of an obligation to disclose that if, as part of it, but...
And also, like on Florida, if you're on that avenue, if someone puts a little business there and they put concrete down or asphalt, the people next door, when it rains, they're going to get all the extra water that would have went into the ground if they had grass instead of a concrete parking lot. So.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir, Gordon. Gordon Brown, you need a microphone here. Yeah, can we get your name and address for the record for this item, please?
Well, if you can pick up under my-
Yeah. Name and address, sir.
It's Gordon Brown, 337 New York Avenue. I'm, you know, what attracted to me to St. Cloud was Florida Avenue and New York Avenue. That's the best thing you guys got. I mean, there aren't many cities left that had that kind of thing. That's your, that's what makes St. Cloud so, I'm dumbfounded. I cannot believe, I think if you could consider, I'm not talking as fast, maybe just eliminating that vertical strip. I understand by Lakeshore how that's just too tempting to people from doing something, but please, God, leave. I'm dumbfounded. It's the best thing about St. Cloud. Christ almighty, you know what's happening in Florida? Everywhere is this crap, buildings being put up, and you're jumping on the bandwagon. All right, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience like to speak on this item? City manager, how soon would we be moving forward on talking about what types of uses or zonings? Because that would allow public discussion again, right? We're going to be-
So, I would ask, I would ask Ms. Dunkland to come up and discuss the process that she's envisioning.
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland. So, if this is approved, our next couple of items, you'll see we're going to propose to land development code updates, one for the JPA infill centers, and then one for the table of classified lands. In that table, we are proposing to assign the neighborhood business zoning district to the neighborhood commercial land use. So, there are already standards in place for that with the caveat that conditional uses are required, and the uses are limited to the overlay. We've created an overlay on Florida Avenue and an overlay for that section of Lakeshore Boulevard that will bind them to the requirements of the land, of the future land use element to limit the uses along Florida Avenue, to the accessory commercial units and professional offices, and limit Lakeshore Boulevard to that section between Massachusetts and Michigan to bed and breakfast and cafe restaurants.
Okay. Yeah, I think with Florida, it's really, I'm trying to find a balance on this. Yes, Councilmember Urban stated, you know, we don't want to hinder commercial growth, business growth, but I also, you know, appreciate the beauty of our Florida Avenue. And obviously, if we do this, we don't, I don't think we should have bicycles going down Florida Avenue. I don't think that's appropriate with-
If I may, Mayor, Melissa, how far does the historic district go up Florida Avenue? The reason I ask is because I think the historic district would also restrict some of the changes that people are fearful of because they have to stay consistent with what was historically there. So, the changes to the buildings would have to be consistent.
Off the top of my head, just going strictly by memory, I think it's like 9th or 8th Street?
From Lakeshore south?
No, 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 from 13th to 9th or 8th. I think my zoning manager in the back is looking it up.
And are you currently looking at extending the historic district the whole way up Florida Avenue? Was that the next district that you were looking at with Main Street?
With Main Street. They're proposing to do a new survey, and that will be brought before council, for council direction and decision in the future.
That was going to be my comment. I think all of Lakeshore should be in the historic district, but it sounds like we're working on that.
All of Lakeshore? All of Florida Avenue. All the way down to Lakeshore? Is that kind of what? How does that work to put that in the historic area as well? Because I am looking down Florida Avenue closer to the lake, and I do see some older homes from the early 1900s.
So, when the inventory is done, staff would end up having public meetings with the people in the area, and there would then be public hearings with the city council to revise the ordinance to designate those homes as historic?
All right, what's the pleasure of the council?
I like the idea also of the maybe turning Florida into historic.
Okay, is that some-
Rather than commercial, a neighborhood commercial.
Well, I think you would have that, but with the historic overlay, is that correct, city manager?
Yes, they can be both.
So, we can put that on as a condition on this, or add it as a motion?
It's already underway right now with Main Street and city staff. So-
To go all the way to Lakeshore?
They're doing the study to see what would qualify as the historic. They need to make sure that the houses that are still there would qualify, the majority of them. So, that is just, maybe I shouldn't have brought it up, but I was trying to show that the character shouldn't change because we are continuing to expand the historic district to the north. It's already in progress. I would say, what, a year?
Typically.
And all, just to make sure, all changes on Lakeshore would have to come back through us for approval, right? I'm sorry, Florida Avenue?
Florida Avenue, yes, correct. Florida Avenue, we would have to process rezonings, which is step one, and then step two, we would have to process a conditional use permit. And that's where we would have the ability to look at the individual site, see what the site limitations are, address any site limitations, and then they would need approval from council to move forward. And if council doesn't grant that approval, then they will not be able to move forward.
So, if this council said, we don't want to approve your zoning change until the historic district is updated, we could do that?
I don't see why not unless there's a legal reason why they couldn't.
Yeah, just because they get the future lane use does not automatically get them the zoning.
It does not.
Okay. All right, what's the council?
Motion to approve item one of the public hearings.
All right, we have a motion to approve, Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Gilbert, Deputy Mayor Gilbert. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
And thank you to the citizens that came up and spoke on this. I know it's, there are some changes coming down the way. I don't know that this is going to be a fast change. I think it will be 15, 20 years down the road before there's any truly noticeable changes down there. You know, we may have some pop-up here and there, but we're going to have a lot of time, a lot of, every time that a business comes to the table, everybody will have an opportunity to speak up on that. So, that's where we get an opportunity, but the citizens do as well, so. All right?
Thank you.
All right, will the clerk please read item number two?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-65. In ordinance of the city council, the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending chapter three performance and sitting standards of the land development code by adding a new article, article 12, titled JPA infill centers identified as JPA infill centers, LDC update, project CCA 25-00005, providing for a JPA infill center standards and providing severability, scrivener's errors, conflict administrative corrections, codification, publication, effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland again, Director of Community Development. This item is to update the land development code to correspond with the proposed updates of the future land use element of the comprehensive plan. This update establishes the standards for properties shown on the future land use map and identified on the comprehensive plan as a JPA infill center. There are four different types of centers, and we'll go through them individually on the following slides, but before we go through each individual center type, we will talk about the intent. The intent is to enable the creation of compact development areas that encourage walkability and transit use and improves interconnectivity for vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian traffic. So, the first center is primarily intended for small-scale neighborhoods serving retail and office uses and a supporting mix of residential types, including mixed-use buildings. The center can be up to 10 acres and must be adjacent to local streets, avenues, or boulevards. The JPA community center is primarily intended for large-scale retail offices, civic uses, and medium-to-high-density residential. Those can range from 10 to 70 acres. The area within, or the more intense area is identified as the core, and the area extending one-half mile outside of that area is considered the perimeter. And each of these centers will have a core and a perimeter moving forward, and so the urban center is primarily intended for large-scale retail and office and intense residential development, a minimum of 70 acres, and the perimeter generally extends one mile outside of the core of the center. The employment center is primarily intended to provide intense workplace developments and are also required to be a minimum of 70 acres. The perimeter of the employment center also generally extends a mile outside of the center core. Again, the uses are primarily intended for workplace developments, and they do allow for ancillary retail uses for employees, secondary educational facilities, and a mix of residential types for the employees. This amendment adopts developments and citing standards. It creates build-two lines versus setbacks. It requires enhanced civic areas, sets architectural standards for building orientation, form, massing, articulation, and roof modulation. Staff is recommending approval. Planning Commission at its meeting on August 19th, 2025, also recommended approval, and likewise, we are requesting council approve ordinance number 2025-65 for the JPA infill centers land development code update. This is a staff-initiated project, so staff is available if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? All right, council discussion? And can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, Councilmember Paul. Second from Councilmember Urban. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Will the clerk please read item number three?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-64. In ordinance of the city council, the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending chapter three performance and sitting standards of the land development code by amending article 15, titled supplemental regulations, by amending section 3.15.12, classifications of annexed lands and compatibility matrix identified as LDC table of classified land updates, project CCA 25-00004, providing for the severability, scrivener's errors, conflict administrative corrections, codification, publication, effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. This land development code update is to amend the table of classified lands. This table assigns a corresponding zoning district with each future land use designation. With the update of the future land use element, it is necessary to make these changes to ensure that each future land use designation has a compatible zoning designation assigned. This is table 3.15.12A, our St. Cloud Osceola County zoning conversion table. It captures the existing and newly added future land use designations and shows which county designations are compatible with our St. Cloud zoning designation. So, basically, when land is annexed from the county into the city, there's a corresponding zoning district assigned. This is a continuation of the table. And this is a continuation of the table again that captures the urban, I'm sorry, the JPA infill centers that were just adopted. And here is table 3.15.12B, which captures the existing and newly added future land use designations, and you'll see that the centers are included there, and that neighborhood commercial land use that was just adopted, you'll see that there's neighborhood business zoning that is compatible with that land use, but the asterisk points to the bottom note that says permissible uses must be consistent with the adopted neighborhood commercial overlay, so that's what I was referring to earlier. Okay? Honorable for July 9th, 2025, staff recommended approval. Planning Commission also recommended approval at their meeting at August 19th, 2025. Likewise, we are requesting council to approve ordinance number 2025-64 for the update of the table of classified lands. Staff is available if you have any questions. This is also a city-initiated project. This is also a city-initiated, uh, project.
All right, thank you. And would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? Council discussion? And can I entertain a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved. Deputy Mayor Gilbert, second from councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher? Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
And will the clerk please read item number four into the record?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-62. In ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning future land use designation of approximately plus-minus 9.04 acres identified as Grace Community Church, Project CPA 25-00007, generally located north of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, east of Nova Road, south of Lake Lizzy Drive, and west of Bradley Drive for, from community center county to community center city, providing for amending of the future, official future last land use map of the comprehensive plan, following the Planning Commission's recommendations, proof of publication, applicability, and effect, severability copies on file and effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. Oh, may I request that we read the next item for the zoning that goes along with this?
Yes, Madam Clerk, please, please read item number five.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-63. In ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, providing of, for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the Land Development Code, city of, of the city of St. Cloud, Florida specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately plus-minus 9.04 acres identified as Grace Community Church, Project ZMA 25-00011, generally located north of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, east of Nova Road, south of Lake Lizzy Drive, and west of Bradley Drive from CCP community center perimeter to county CCP community center perimeter city. Zoning designation providing for amending of the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, following the Planning Commission's recommendations, proof of publication, applicability, and effect, severability, copies on file and effective date.
Thank you. Okay, so these cases before you tonight are for the comprehensive plan amendment and zoning map amendment for the project known as Grace Community Church. The existing future land use is community center county, and the proposed future land use is JPA community center city. The existing zoning is community center perimeter in the county, and we are proposing a community center perimeter city zoning designation. This request is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. Here's a gra, graphic representation of the future land use map depicting the existing community center, center land use. Here is a graphic representation of the zoning map depicting the existing community center perimeter zoning. Staff is recommending approval. Planning Commission also recommended approval at their meeting on August 19th, 2025. We are requesting that city council approve ordinance number 2025-62 and 2025-63 for the comprehensive plan amendment and zoning map amendments for the project known as Grace Community Church. The applicant was not able to make it tonight, but staff is available if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. And would anyone in the audience like to speak on these two items? And any comments from council? Okay, and can I get a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved. Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Second.
Second from councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher? Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Will the clerk please read?
Well, Mayor, can we get a motion on item number five?
Oh, we gotta do two votes, yes, sir. And can I, can I get a motion on item number five?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Councilmember Paul?
Second.
Second from councilmember Gilbert, I'm sorry, Urban. I pointed at you, you know. I heard him over here. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher? Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
I think you're stepping on the cord maybe. All right, will the clerk please read item number six?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-59. In ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the Land Development Code of the city of St. Cloud, Florida specifically changing zoning designation of approximately plus-minus 1.95 acres identified as DMI Business Park Phase Two, Project ZMA 25-00005, from R1A single-family dwelling to I1 industrial located at 1505 Orange Avenue, providing for entering the designation of official zoning map of filing the Planning Commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
Sorry, I had to confer with my deputy over there. Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. This request before you is for the rezoning of the DMI Business Park. So the future land use change was approved with the future land use map update. So the, the existing future land use is now employment. And the existing zoning is R1A, single-family dwelling. They are requesting to change their zoning to I1. This development is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. Here's a graphic depiction of our future land use map showing the land use for context. And here is the zoning map for context. Honor before June 16th, 2025, staff recommended approval. Planning Commission also recommended approval at their meeting at August 19th, 2025. And we are requesting that council approve ordinance number 2025-59 for the rezoning of DMI Business Park. Staff and the applicant, I believe, is available if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. Would the applicant like to speak on this item?
Yeah, I just concur.
Uh, yeah, can I get your name and address for the record?
Uh, Danny Martinez, 400 DMI Court, St. Cloud, Florida.
Thank you.
I just concur with whatever she had on that because it's just a business park, more jobs.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you. And would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? And council discussion? Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Councilmember Urban?
Second.
Second from councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher? Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Will the clerk please read item number seven?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-66. In ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, providing, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the Land Development Code of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately plus-minus 30.94 acres identified as Elite Estates, Project ZMA-00001, from MDX Mixed Use County to Mixed, Mixed Use City, generally located at the northeast intersection of Clay Whaley Road and Wagon Court, providing for entering the designation of official zoning map with the filing, planning, filing the Planning Commission's recommendation, proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. This case before you tonight is for the zoning map amendment for the project known as Elite Estates. This one was also updated with our future land use element update. So the, um, slides are, are, haven't caught up to the change that just happened. But the existing future land use is now mixed use, and the existing zoning is mixed use county. They are requesting a mixed use city designation. This request is compatible with the surrounding areas and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. Here's a graphic representation of the map. It doesn't show the assigned zoning district for those parcels. That was a map error. But it's mixed use in the county, or it was mixed use when it was in the county, and they are requesting mixed use in the city. Staff recommended approval. Honor before August 25th, 2025. Planning Commission also recommended approval at their meeting on September 16th, 2025. We are requesting that council approve ordinance number 2025-66 for the zoning map amendment for Elite Estates. And staff is available if you have any questions. I believe the applicant is also here if you have any questions.
All right, would the applicant like to speak on this item? I think the applicant left. So is he the applicant?
Yes.
Sean, are you on, is this yours? Did you fall asleep back there?
No, sir, I'm Sean Hendel, Hanson Walter Associates, 8 Broadway, Kissimmee, Florida. I'm not the applicant. Columnar, who's the builder for the development, submitted the application, but we are the engineer for the development. So if you have any questions, I'm familiar with it. I can answer those.
Yes, sir. All right, would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? And council discussion? Can I get a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved. Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Second.
Second from councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher? Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Sean. And will the clerk please read item number eight?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-49. In ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, adopting transportation element of the comprehensive plan, Project CPA 25-00006, providing for filing the Planning Commission's recommendations, improve of publication, applicability, and effect, severability, copies on file, and effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. This request is to adopt the update to the transportation element. The transportation element is the city's planning document for transportation infrastructure. This update is an effort to capture the recommendations made in the Transportation and Mobility Master Plan and the Vision Zero Action Plan that was approved last year. This update includes inventory and data analysis in the following areas: roadway, infrastructure, and classification, safety, multimodal transportation, transportation systems analysis, and future planning. Okay, this is our Framework Streets map. There are several maps in the map series, but we're going to go through a few examples. This one being the Framework Streets. This, all Framework Streets will be designed as complete transportation corridors, including bicycle and pedestrian and transit features to achieve a true multimodal system. One thing of note, as requested by council at the transmittal hearing on June 12th, this map was updated to remove the extension of Michigan Avenue through the golf course parcel and extended Orange Avenue south instead. This map demonstrates the maintenance responsibilities. It identifies which roadways are the responsibility of the city, which ones are the responsibility of the county or the state for maintenance. This map shows you the traffic crash density and severity. This is an example of a new map that was added to the series of maps reflecting the data from the Vision Zero Action Plan. The update proposes two overarching goals. The underlined words are updated or added to the current goals. And we will talk about those goals a little bit in detail. So the city of St. Cloud is committed to creating a safe, efficient, and accessible multimodal transportation system for all users. The policies and objectives will help guide updates to our Land Development Code in order to accomplish them. So the complete streets, principles, and level of service standards are based on the latest FDOT guidelines and to ensure our roads accommodate vehicles, bicycles, pedestrians, and transit. Our Framework Streets will serve as the backbone of the network, designed with context-sensitive features and guided by updated design codes. We recognize that certain corridors, such as 192, may remain constrained. So we prioritize multimodal enhancements where widening is impossible. Safety is at the top of our, is, safety is the top priority, and we're working to eliminate serious injuries and fatalities by improving high-risk areas, monitoring crash data annually, and adopting safer speed designs. Goal two, this, this plan is guided by our Transportation and Mobility Master Plan, which we must update every five to seven years to reflect evolving priorities. Mobility fees serve as our primary funding source for future improvements, and we review those fees every four years to stay up to date with the needs of the community and construction costs. This element supports exploring alternative financing options, including public-private partnerships, developer contributions, and state and federal grants. We're also working closely with Osceola County and other partners to coordinate projects to ensure that developments within the joint planning area are adequately funded and aligned with our transportation goals. Staff recommends approval. Planning Commission also recommended approval at their meeting on May 20th, 2025. Likewise, it is requested that council approve the adoption of ordinance number 2025-49 for the update to the transportation element. And staff is available if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. Anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is John White, 2220 Eastern Avenue. One of the things you, on this transportation element, you might want to think about is, like, she talked about Orange Avenue going all the way to Nolte Road. Another road that doesn't quite go that way is Eastern Avenue, which I live on. But when you start looking from 192 to Nolte Road, look at every road that goes through there. There's a school on every road, school zone on every road. So those are things you might want to think about when you're adding these roads and future land aspects of what roads can you put down through there that don't have a school on them? And I thank y'all.
Yes, sir. Thank you, John. And council discussion?
Mayor, for me?
Yes, sir.
This also works with Vision 2050 with Metro Plan 417, CSX. So it's not just St. Cloud, but working in, in unison with those other entities. Is that correct? So that's, that's what we're kind of looking at is, St. Cloud is one piece of the puzzle, Osceola County is, Metro Plan is, CSX, Turnpike 417. There's probably six, seven entities. And Vision Zero 2050 is not to have any fatalities or any major accidents in 2050. And we see it going down in, in the Metro Plan area. We do see this with this vision to do it. Safety is first with, with the plans, and I know that the city adapted, adopted that. So I yield back to you, Mayor, just to explain that, that the bigger picture is, we are working with the other entities that provide larger roads to us, federal, state, and, and county government. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other council discussion? And can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Councilmember Paul?
Second.
Second from councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher? Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Will the clerk please, please read item number 12 into the record?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-68. In ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, as authorized by Section 177.144, 42 Florida statutes, renaming the Seminole Land Investment Company plat of colored quarter to the Seminole Land Investment Company plat of east quarter, providing for severability, conflict, and effective date.
Good evening. Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. This request before you tonight is to rename the plat of the colored quarters. Section 177.142 of state statutes allows a local governing body to change the name appearing on any recorded plat by ordinance if it is determined that the name includes an ethnic or racial slur. On October 8th, 1910, a plat was recorded by the Office of the Clerk of the Circuit Court of Osceola County for the colored plat of Seminole Land and Investment Company in plat book one page 39. It was originally bounded by 10th Street to the north, Narcusi Road to the east, East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway to the south, and Pine Lane to the west. Currently, 34 lots still show plat of the colored quarter in their legal description. I don't see it on my slide. I think I failed to put in there that the proposed name is to change it from colored quarter to east quarter?
Yes, it was on the previous slide.
Oh, did I? Did I miss it? Okay. Gotcha. There you go. It was there. Sorry, I missed that. The removal of the word colored and replacing it with east. Okay. Staff recommends approval. Likewise, it has requested that council approve ordinance number 2025-68, and staff is available if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you. And would anyone in the audience like to speak on this? Yes, ma'am.
Teresa Melhot, 2924 Colby Circle, St. Cloud, Florida. I want you to auto approve this. I believe that is long overdue that we get rid of these slurs that are in our, I mean, that's terrible. And we're in 2025 now, and this should be approved. We should change that to the east quarters. I just wanted to say that. I sat here all night for this one just because I wanted to say, I really do wish you all would approve this. Long time overdue.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to speak on this? And council discussion?
So, yes, I will speak on this. As a dedicated leader here in the community, I brought this forward because people came to me about it. And so when residents come to me with concerns, as a great leader, I'm going to bring them back to the city to do the right thing. I know this might have happened way before my time, but there's articles from 2007 in the Orlando Sentinel that residents wanted this changed. So to see this happening in 2025, it makes my heart happy, and I thank the city for doing the right thing. So that's all I have to say.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, motion approved. All right. I think we have a second from Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
Correct.
But I would like to say, yes, I agree. It is time to change this and, and really clean up some of the language around the city here. So we have a motion from, sorry, Councilmember Paul, second from Deputy Mayor Gilbert. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher? Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
All right. Will the clerk please read item number 13?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-71. An ordinance of the City Council of City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending the city code of ordinance since chapter 42, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 3, Parking, Stopping, and Standing by amending section 42-61, generally section 42-62. Parking spaces provided by governmental agencies and are non-governmental agencies for certain disabled persons. Section 42-64, Notice of Illegally Parked Vehicles. Section 42-65, Liability for Payment of Parking Vehicles, Parking Citation Violations. And section 42-66, Hearing and Contest Citations Before City Hearing Officer, and renumbering section 42-67, Presumption Regarding Illegal Parking, Operating, Stopping, etc., Providing for Conflict, Severability, Administrative Corrections, Codification, Publication, Beg the Date.
Good evening. Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. This update before you tonight is for St. Cloud's parking code under chapter 42. This revision ensures our parking regulations are consistent, enforceable, and aligned with current statutes. I'll summarize the key changes because there are a lot that happened in this update, but the primary goal of this ordinance is to modernize and bring our parking regulations up to date with today's traffic conditions and state law. It improves how we enforce parking violations and clarifies expectations for residents, businesses, and visitors. These changes will promote consistency, fairness, and safer public spaces across the city. Enforcement authority is now expanded beyond police officers to include code enforcement, code enforcement officers and any specialists. This allows for a more consistent and timely response to violations citywide. The ordinance also clarifies the process for issuing citations, ensuring due process and efficiency. The existing process requires issued citations to be appealed by the court. This proposed amendment will allow appeals through the Code Enforcement Special Magistrate, and I think I already mentioned that it expanded the authority to allow community service and code enforcement officers to issue citations. Okay? The new list of prohibited parking areas provides clarity for residents and enforcement staff. We've also added a provision for trailer parking, allowing it only when loading, unloading, or providing an active service such as landscaping or repair. This section enhances accessibility by reinforcing protections for disabled parking spaces. It allows for towing when violations occur, but also makes allowances for short-term loading or unloading of disabled individuals, and it formalizes when vehicles may be towed, such as when they create safety hazards or are abandoned. The administrative process is now more clear, and the code enforcement magistrate will oversee hearings, ensuring consistency with due process. Let's see, late fees, cancellation fees, and registration holds help, encourage compliance, and reduce repeat offenses. The penalties will be set and adjusted by resolution, which is later on the agenda, giving council flexibility to revise them as needed without another full ordinance change. And overall, this ordinance modernizes our parking management in St. Cloud, supporting both enforcement efficiency and community fairness. And with all that said, staff is recommending approval, and we are requesting that council also approve ordinance number 2025-71. And staff is available if you have any questions.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? And council discussion?
May I, may I, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I met with the citizens and Letitia and Melissa, code enforcement. They've done a wonderful job with this. They've tightened up some of our parking infractions and being able to penalize for such, not just warning, but to follow up with those parking infractions. So I do believe this is a good step in the right direction to give code enforcement, to give police, and to give them the ability to give warnings and fines and such for parking. It also includes trailers that people park and take off and leave the trailer by itself with nothing attached to it, which is definitely a code violation. So I truly think the staff did a great job, and also a citizen came in and had some input with that also. So I thought it was a great team effort, Melissa, by your team. And I just encourage you, if you don't know it, to read the old and the new, and knowing that this gives us a little more strength behind our code enforcement. So I yield back to you with that, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else on council? And can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Councilmember Paul?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher? Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
All right. Let's do one more, then we'll take a break. Can you do one more? Okay, let's do one more. Can you please read item number 14, Madam Clerk?
Public hearing for resolution number 2025-132R. A resolution of the City Council of City of St. Cloud, Florida, of St. Cloud of Osceola County, Florida, pursuant to section 196.1978 subsection three, subsection zero, Florida statutes electing not to exempt property under section B Florida statutes commonly known as a live local act, property tax exemption, providing for severability and effective date.
Good evening. Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. This request before you tonight is for the Live Local Act Property Tax Exemption. State statutes, section 196, allows, I'm sorry, requires Osceola County property appraisers to exempt certain real rental properties from at the lower taxes if such properties meet the criteria of the live local property tax exemption. Beginning with the 2025 tax rule, we, we are allowed and we're given the authority to opt out of providing that live local property tax exemption to units in multifamily projects that are used to house natural persons or families whose annual income is between 80 and 120% of the medium annual adjusted gross income for the household within the metropolitan statistical area with, within the county in which the person or family resides. Sorry, I forgot to hit this slide. So this, this statute grants a 75% property tax exemption for those multifamily housing projects that we were just discussing. And if this is approved, the opt out of this tax exemption will, will be effective for the 2026 tax year, and we have to renew this annually. So the, the way we are able to opt out of the tax exemption is that if the Schimberg Housing Study identifies the Orlando Kissimmee Sanford Metropolitan Statistical Area, which we are a part of, as having a surplus of units available for rent within that 80 to 120% AMI range, then we can opt out. What that study showed for last year is that we had a surplus of 5,274 units within that MSA. So staff is recommending approval, and we are requesting that council approve Resolution 2025-132R, and staff is available if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you. And would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? And council discussion? Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Councilmember Urban?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher? Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
All right. Let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break. Come on back.
All right, we will go on ahead and move to council action, and will the clerk please read council action number two?
Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one fifty-seven R, a resolution of the City Council of City of St., authorizing chapter forty-two, traffic and vehicles, article three, parking, stopping, and standing sections twenty, forty-two dash sixty-nine, penalty for violations, establishing penalties for failure to comply with city parking codes, repealing all resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. This case before you tonight is, um, the resolution that's in conjunction with the, um, public hearing ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seventy-one, that was just approved. Um, it establishes the penalties for failure to comply with city parking codes. Uh, the fees range from twenty-five to fifty dollars. Staff recommends approval of, of this item, sorry, my slide disappeared, staff recommends approval. Likewise, it is requ, we are requesting that council approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one five seven R, and staff is available if you have any questions.
Yeah, all right, would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item?
Mayor, if I could, just one clarification, the fees actually range from twenty-five dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars. The, the parking in a disabled permit, in a disabled space without a permit is two hundred and fifty dollars under the proposed resolution.
Sorry about that. Typo.
All right, thank you. And anyone in the audience? Council discussion. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve with the two hundred and fifty dollar, um, final from fifty to two fifty, is that right?
Well, I was just pointing out, it's in the, it's in the resolution that way, it was just incorrect in the slide. So, we're good the way, just the way the resolution is. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion from Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher? Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
And this is Ivy's favorite part. First reading is an introduction, next items on the agenda are ordinances before the City Council for first reading and introduction for the sole purpose for the council to authorize the publication of the ordinance for final reading, uh, for final hearing. The council will not take final action on the item tonight. Full presentations and public input on the ordinances will occur at a final hearing at which the council will consider final action. Will the clerk please read item number one?
First reading introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash fifty-eight. An ordinance of the City Council of City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending the land development code as follows, amending growth management services to read, community development department, article one, section thirty dash two, subsection A, remove refundable performance bonds, section thirty dash three, add boat ramp hours, section thirty point four, subsection A, amend dawn to dusk to read sunrise to sunset, article two, section thirty dash sixteen, amending a major special event definition, special event, removing the event cap of two hundred and fifty people and removing a minor special event definition, amending section thirty dash eighteen, subsection A, subsection one, to specialty events, and removing the cap of two hundred and fifty people. Section thirty dash eighteen, subsection A, subsection two, removing minor special events, amending section thirty dash eighteen, subsection B, to remove daily attendance of two hundred and fifty persons or greater, amending section thirty dash eighteen, subsection C, subsection one, removing daily attendance of the event is greater than two hundred and fifty persons, or amending section thirty dash nineteen, to remove minor special events, section thirteen dash nineteen, subsection A, limiting the number of special events within a calendar year and setting reservation requirements, section thirteen dash nineteen, subsection B, subsection three, setting requirements for who may act in the organization's behalf, section thirty dash nineteen, subsection B, setting payment terms and providing conflict severability clarification in an effective date.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? And committing a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion approved, Councilmember, uh, Paul, second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher? Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Will the clerk please read item number two?
First reading introduction for ordinance, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seventy, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation approximately plus minus sixteen point two acres identified as Reva's Edge PUD, PMPF, formerly known as Lake Lizzie Residential Development, project PUD twenty-three dash zero 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 three, from LDR Low Density Residential County to PUD, P, Plan Unit Development City, generally located north of highway one ninety-two and northwest shore of Lake Lizzie, east of Pine Grove Road and south of Bass Highway, providing, providing for entering the designation official zoning map, following the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication severability effective date.
All right, can we get a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, Council, uh, Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher? Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson? Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion passes three one.
Will the clerk please read item number three?
First reading introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seventy-two. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation approximately plus minus point forty-two acres identified as Cavan Corner Project, CPA twenty-five dash zero 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 nine, generally located north of East Twelfth Street, east of Mississippi Avenue, north of Eleventh Street and west of Eastern Avenue, from MTR Medium Density Residential to COM Commercial, providing for amending of the official, official future land use, land use map of the comprehensive plan, following the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, applicability, effects, severability, copies on file and effective date.
And can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher. Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Will the clerk please read item number four?
First reading introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seventy-three. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation approximately plus minus point forty-two acres identified as Cavan Corners Project, ZMA twenty-five dash zero zero one three, from R two, single family to two-family dwelling, from B C, business commercial, generally located north of East Twelfth Street, east of Mississippi Avenue and south of Eleventh Street, west of Eastern Avenue, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map, following the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability and effective date.
And can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approv, approved, Councilmember Paul.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council, Councilmember Fletcher. Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Will the clerk please read item number five?
First reading introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seventy-four. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud, approximately plus minus six point twenty acres identified as Nova Road Community Center, project ANX twenty-five dash zero 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 one eight, generally located north of Lake Lizzie Drive, south of Nova Road and west of Juliana Road in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of chapter one seven one point zero four four Florida statutes.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher. Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Will the clerk please read item number six into the record?
First reading introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seventy-five. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation approximately plus minus six point two, point two zero acres identified as Nova Road Community Center Project, CPA twenty-five dash zero 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 eight, generally located north of Lake Lizzie Drive, north, southeast of Nova Road and west of Juliana Road, from CCC Community Center County to CCC Community Center City, providing for amending a future, official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, following the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, applicability and effect severability, copies on file and effective date.
Can I get a motion? Motion approved. Motion approved, Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher. Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Will the clerk please read item number seven?
First reading introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seventy-six. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation approximately plus minus six point twenty acres identified as Nova Road Community Center, project ZMA twenty-five dash zero 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 one two, from CR Commercial Residential County to RS three Residential Single Family County to CCC Community Center Core City, generally located north of Lake Lizzie Drive, southeast of Nova Road, west of Juliana Road, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map, following the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability and effective date.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to, go ahead, sir.
Motion approved, Councilmember Paul.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher. Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Will the clerk please read item number eight?
First reading introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seventy-eight. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending Division twenty-seven Entertainment District, section three point thirteen point three, C two, outside drinking limits, G, hours for music and entertainment, entertainment and H, games, sporting events and entertainment, and repealing section three point thirteen plus point three, C, subsection five, permit required, D, entertainment district event permit and E, police protection, F, fire protection, emergency medical services, providing for severability, conflicts, codification, effective date.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, Councilmember Paul.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher. Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Madam Clerk, please read item number nine.
First reading introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seventy-nine. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending chapter three, performance and sitting standards of the land development code by amending article two through sixteen identified as employment, employment, commercial, LDC update, project CDA twenty-five dash zero 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 four, providing for severability, scrivener's errors, conflict administrative corrections, codification, publications and effective date.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, Councilmember Urban, I think I saw a second, Councilmember Paul. Is that correct?
Yes.
I saw, I heard something, I thought. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher. Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Will the clerk please read item number ten into the record?
First reading introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eighty. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning map, zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing zoning designation approximately plus minus three hundred and twenty-seven point four acres identified as Neo City South, project ZMA twenty-five dash zero 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 one six, from eight agricultural to EC Employment Commercial, generally located north of Claywellye Road, east of C thirty-one, south, St. Cloud Canal, south of Crossbury Parkway and west of the Florida Turnpike, providing for amending of the official future zoning map, following the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, applicability, effects, severability, copies on file and effective date.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, Councilmember Paul.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Urban. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher. Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
All right. And city attorney, do you have anything to add?
I do not, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
On top of everything else we've done tonight?
I do not have anything, thank you, sir.
All right. And city manager?
I have a really long list.
Okay. That's what we're here for.
Um, just a few things. On December sixteenth, Senator Arrington has requested to host remote office hours in our first floor lobby with Councilwoman Paul. This is the first time we've had a request like this. The last time she made a request, it was actually to use a facility here. It's, it's public access. I just wanted to, to bring it up to the city council so that you, you were aware that that request had, had been made. Additionally, we did a press release, council's aware, but, you know, want to make sure in case anyone is still watching that happens to be a firefighter. The City of St. Cloud did receive the safer grant, so we are hiring forty-eight firefighters. Twenty-four of those need to be paramedics. It's a nine point five million dollar grant and the city has already started posting the positions. So, wanted to take the opportunity, if anybody is listening right now. We successfully changed over the, the fiscal year, October first. It's a lot of work goes into that from our staff, so kudos to all the staff that was involved in every department across the city. And finally, just kudos to the planning staff, but specifically Melissa Dunklin on the passing of the future land use element. That was five years, she's been working on that, she's gone through multiple consultants, many public meetings. She's had, you know, some staff turnover doing that and she continued pushing ahead to make sure that we got across the finish line, so kudos, Melissa. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Paul.
All right, first, I want to say happy birthday to my mom, Karen Stark-Paul.
Happy birthday, my mom.
Um, secondly, I want a friendly reminder of, for October, awareness is breast cancer awareness as well as domestic violence. I know we have organizations that are, do great things in the community, St. Cloud community, that provide these, you know, resources as well, so wanted to share that. And then I have a concern regarding a conversation I had back in August with our city manager regarding her termination. I know it hit me in the awkward spot prior to the meeting when she made it aware of what was, you know, going to be revealed at the meeting. That just hit me in the awkward spot and so when it comes to doing things and the, you know, as a leader, I want to ensure that I'm always doing things the right way and doing it at all times. So, one thing with me, when it comes to my integrity, I want to always ensure that I'm doing the right things as long as I'm sitting in this seat here. So, I do, did want to address that and share that with the council as well, so. And then, I do have, I, so, parents reached out to me in the 4-H regarding students wanting to participate in a workshop in December. And so, I wanted to see if they would have the opportunity to participate in a December workshop to present their project to the entire council, if that was okay. Just wanted to put that request out there if possible.
Is that, is that, is there a specific item on that workshop? I'm not sure what's on that workshop agenda, but.
I don't know.
Typically, how we've done it is the council, as part of the workshops, decides whether they want to receive public input or not. The mayor usually has.
Which, the October twenty-third?
December.
I think she said December, yeah, so.
Yeah.
So, but I think your Councilwoman Paul, you want to basically give them some advance notice.
Yes, because, um, they wanted to present to the entire council, but they wanted a good opportunity of when they could do that and I just recommended a workshop, that way we're all here and they can present. It's for students that are looking to present, so, their project to the council as a whole.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, if you want to provide their contact information to me, we can coordinate directly with them or we can go through you, whichever way you'd like to do it.
Okay. And then, the, two more requests. One is with the St. Cloud Main Street regarding the downtown business group. They are hosting the trick or treat this year and it's not their event, but they picked it up because, of course, if they didn't have that, then, of course, the city would have got the black eye of not having something downtown. So, kudos to Rep. Stark for picking it up and continuing on with this event. The request that she put in for, it's, you, you guys were sent the email on yesterday and it's the total amount for the items that she requested, a small stage, small stage labor fee and other items comes out to be three thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. I asked if we could support St. Cloud Main Street since they are a business partner and waiving this cost for St. Cloud Main Street.
Go ahead, city manager.
If council's supportive of it, we have funds in the community grants still, like the community grant fund.
All right, and then the last one.
Was there consensus?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Was, was there consensus?
Yeah, you got it.
Okay, thank you.
And then, the last one is with the St. Cloud Chamber. Of course, at the workshop, they stated that they would like to do four events here in St. Cloud and the first event will be the quarterly luncheon on November thirteenth. They are requesting to rent the Metanoia Room, which is this room here, three hundred and eighty dollars plus, there is a five hundred dollar deposit. In lieu of the deposit, they have requested that we allow them to accept accountability for the damages and bill them if there's damages occurred. I did see President Webb out there earlier today, but I did have a conversation with him regarding this and he was okay with that. So, I just needed to bring the request forward and get consensus if that is okay, so.
Where do we have that before? That was in the agenda?
It's in the email from yesterday.
It was an email, I knew I read it somewhere. Okay, so that's something that we need to approve or deny based on one of the four that we said we would allow them to have? Okay.
But they'll come forward every time they ask for a event. They will do it where the request comes forward and, of course, it's up to the council to either approve it or deny it.
Okay, and, and we did say that we would.
We did.
Offer four up, so this would be one of the four. And so, the cost is seven, or three hundred and some odd dollars?
Three hundred and eighty and a five hundred dollar deposit.
A five hundred dollar deposit, okay. Uh, council discussion on that?
If we are going to do this, this is also in addition to the sponsorship of fifty K, right?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, with deposits, to me, they're very important because if you mess up the club, you got to clean up the club, so to speak. So, I don't know, in lieu of that, we need to sign an agreement, I think Dan comes in to, to play here, which is an agreement, any event held by the Chamber of Commerce, they're solely responsible for any damages in, in any of the properties that they do. That would cover the deposits for all the events, would it not, council? I don't know.
Well, there's a, typically, there's a user, a facility use agreement that's put in place, but the deposit is part of that. So, I guess the quite, the question that's being asked is the council okay with waiving that deposit for damages? The current agreement with the chamber, the one that was approved tonight, does not have anything that associates any of the waiver of those deposit amounts.
It's your pleasure, mayor, if I could speak on that. I would just like to cover our costs if, if there are any damages. I don't think necessarily that checks need to swap, that they need to put five, we need to go back to four fifty. I think that we need to protect our assets of any damages. I don't know how that's written or things like that, but I'd ask the council to consider the liability that goes to the chamber. And I know what he's saying, but this is in lieu in swapping checks back and forth, if you damage something, you pay for it.
Right, so they just list as additional insured with their insurance? I mean, that'd pretty much.
Well, their insurance usually will cover if somebody's hurt on the premise, it doesn't necessarily cover damage to the facility, which is what the deposit is for. If it's damage or cleaning or whatever else you've done.
Well, it's a long relationship we've had with them. I think, you know, I've kind of gone back and forth on it, but like you said, it's just a swapping of checks. What does it really mean? I mean, I think they'd be good, if, if there were any damages, that they would be good for it.
That's why I'd ask mayor if the, if the attorney would put something in writing because these days, it's just beneficial to have, have it.
Well, we certainly can do that if you want to waive the deposit.
Because that's kind of what in lieu, in lieu of was, instead of putting the deposit, that they would still be held.
Yeah, we'd have to, I'd have to look at.
Liable.
I believe the facility use agreements already have that language in it that basically says they're going to be responsible, they're going to.
You bring it, you buy it.
Identify, basically, yes, sir.
Again, we do have a great relationship, I'm not saying that, it's just look at their assets to cover costs of any kind of damages. And that's with any group, that's just not them and it's any group.
And that's why I say because of that great sixty-year relationship, whatever it's been, I think maybe even longer, I don't think they're going to abuse our, the facilities. I think they're going to take care of it.
I, I don't either and everything's good until it isn't, you know, if, if somebody runs into a wall, they fix it.
They recently had it for the baseball event as well, so they just not too long ago rented it, so...
Okay, no, I'm good with that. Got consensus?
Yeah, yeah, typically, the council doesn't approve the facility use agreements, but they're going to, there's a consensus, they don't have to pay the fees.
And that's all I have.
All right, I'll let you finish, but I want to go back to your second thing you brought up. Can you please clarify what you meant by that?
So, back in August, of course, before our meeting, we had a conversation about the potential of your termination. You asked for support, but I declined because I didn't want to jump the gun with, until I heard what was going to go on. To me, it just didn't sit well with me from August, and here we are in October, but I'm always willing to do the right thing, so coming forward to having this discussion, that's doing the right thing for me. So, I just think, for me, I always want to hear out, you know, things. I don't ever want to be one-sided on information, so I just want to make sure that I hear all details when it comes to decision-making, so, and that's it.
I'm going to ask you to respond to that, please.
I don't know that there's anything to respond to, rather than, I met with my supervisor and asked if I had her support.
After you and I met?
Yes.
You told her, her, any other council members, that...
I said, I said it was going to be brought up, my termination, and I wanted to know if I had her support.
I'm going to say, that bothers me a lot. Because that, that was a conversation between you and I, and councilmembers should not have known what was going to happen or my views on anything. I mean, obviously, if you told them that I made a mo, that I was going to make a motion, and then you asked for their support, doesn't that undermine this process that we have? That's polling councilmembers.
I disagree that it was polling councilmembers. It was having a conversation with my supervisor to ensure...
Who was your supervisor? The five together?
Mayor, you want me to always talk to you before every meeting about things that are going to be brought up? It was the same type of conversation.
Please clarify about things that are going to get brought up. No, you tell me what's going to get brought up. I don't ask other than what's on the agenda. I met with you as a courtesy, because I told you a year and a half ago, maybe more, longer, that I would let you know when it got to that point, that I would make a motion to terminate you, and I said those exact words to you. Did you just meet with councilmember Paul?
No, I met with all, and I didn't share the points that you said to me before the meeting.
Well, I don't think that makes a difference. You, you talked about business that was going to occur before this council, and you...
And I confirmed with our city attorney beforehand that I could do that.
And you asked for their support?
I individually met with each person, said that I, my termination was potentially going to be discussed that evening, and I asked if I had their support.
And you think that's appropriate?
I confirmed ahead of time with our city attorney.
So, you polled councilmembers? That's, I don't know any other way of looking at that. Dan, how, how am I looking at this wrong?
I don't...
How can tho, how can that be discussed outside of a council meeting? What one councilmember is going to be doing, my vote with another councilmember? Because I sure as heck can't do that.
Mayor, I, I believe in those particular circumstances, the city manager has the ability to talk to each one of their councilmembers, individual councilmembers, to discuss the city manager's individual performance and the individual, whether they're doing job responsibilities. Yes, the city count, the city manager reports to the five, to five, to the body of five, but she also reports to individual councilmembers, and she always has a right to basically determine, or ask the question, "Am I doing the things that you want me to do?" Am I val, am I, almost in a day-by-day evaluation of our services? And that's, and that's what I understood was going on, that she was asking individual councilmembers, "Are you supportive of the job that I am doing?"
Well, that's a little different. That's one side, but starting it off with telling them that I'm going to be making a motion to do this and then asking for their support, that's the two-pronged there. I mean, that's not just asking, "Hey, do I have your support as a council, as a, as a city manager?" She's telling them what I'm going to vote on, which way I'm going, and then say, "Can I have your vote the other way?" I mean, that can happen on anything then, Dan.
But I wasn't, I wasn't in that conversation. I wasn't...
No, I understand, but she said that that's what happened.
I didn't say that I said the mayor is going to vote to terminate me this evening. I didn't list the mayor. I said that I was coming up this evening for their, for a termination and wanted to know if I had the council's support.
Councilmember Paul, did, did the city manager say that the mayor was going to make a motion?
She said that her, well, the mayor was going to be bringing up the termination, and if she could, if I would offer my support, I declined because I told her I didn't want to jump without making a decision on hearing the facts. I didn't even know what you were going to bring up in the conversation at that point and stuff, so I said I declined the offer to support her, so until I heard what was going to be brought up that night, so...
And, and my recollection of it was, it wasn't that you said you declined it, it was that you said, "The city can always be better."
Yeah, there were challenges since we've been on here, and I think the whole St. Cloud can attest to that, but we've had challenges, and also I would not support until I heard what was going to be mentioned that night.
So, you didn't tell, thank you, councilmember Paul. I appreciate you speaking up on that. I hadn't...
I'm bringing it up because I have people that supported me and believe in me to do the right thing. I know a lot of citizens have faith in elected officials on doing the right thing, and I'm always going to be bound to do the right thing. So, if it's not, don't make sense, I am going to bring it up. You know, unfortunately, at City Hall since now, there's not too many people you can really trust. And, you know, I don't want to have to come into City Hall with my guard, you know, my, a guard around my heart because you don't know who to trust. So, this is why I'm bringing it up now, and I want to ensure that I do the right thing, and that's always, long as I'm sitting in this seat.
Thank you. She said she had the conversation with you guys too, huh? No wonder, nobody said anything during the meeting. Everybody just stayed silent. Do you know what that looks like to the public? When everybody just sits silent, because it's almost like a predetermined vote? Because everybody knew how I was going to, what I was doing with that motion. Everybody had time to process that and work through the, you know, they call it a walking quorum. The meeting's been had already, but not in the public eye. That's the problem, is that I went through and I, out of the courtesy, I gave the city manager the common courtesy, and you betrayed that trust. I gave you, I told you I would let you know, and you went around immediately after? You said it was before the meeting. I left your office an hour before the meeting. So, you went around, instead of just fighting on your own merits, you went to every councilmember and told them what I was going to be doing and asked for their support. That is polling councilmembers, Dan. I don't care how you want to spin it. That's polling councilmembers. There's no other way, because it's not just saying, "Hey, am I doing a good job?" That's not it. Because the first step is, she went and told them I was making a motion. That's both sides of it. That's saying, "Here's what's going to be on the agenda, and here's how I, I'm asking for you to vote on it." That's polling councilmembers. What's the difference? There is no difference. This is crap. That, that is the ultimate betrayal between the city manager, council relationship. The ultimate betrayal. How can I trust you on anything? We've had this, these issues. That just solidifies everything I did two months ago, that you were willing to go behind our backs, my back. And of course, they're not going to tell me that. They may not know that it's inappropriate. I don't know. I appreciate you speaking up, councilmember Paul, because how can I trust any of this process? No wonder the citizens don't trust City Hall. It is no wonder, because of actions like that. And you can sit there and justify it all day long, but anything I tell you, you can go and tell them and get their support on any other issue. What's the difference? You still think that was appropriate?
Yes, I do.
I totally disagree with you, and I stand committed with my, the way I, I feel, that, that right there solidifies everything, that you cannot be trusted to run the city, because the mayor can't trust you. I sat in your office and told you things, and you went around to councilmembers and told them how I was going to vote.
Mayor, you said a lot of things to me.
I would now like to add it to the agenda to terminate the city manager. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. Can I get a second to add it to the agenda to talk about terminating the city manager?
Second.
We have a second from councilmember Paul. Would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? All right, any council discussion? I'm bothered, guys. That's, no wonder everybody sat silent. You know, the public saw that. Everybody sits silent when some, a discussion such as that takes place. No wonder our citizens don't trust our council, and I'm not blaming you guys, but that's, I appreciate councilmember Paul letting me know, because it seemed awkward that nobody even wanted to talk about the issues that we were facing, and it may never had, had passed, but at least let's have the conversation, because we all know, we had some, some severe issues throughout the year that discussion should have taken place, but discussion had already taken place without me, without the rest of the council, without the public. That's, that's what bothers me, is that...
If I may, mayor?
Yes, sir.
I was not present for Ms. Paul and Ms. Miller's conversation. I was present for my conversation with Ms. Miller, and she said, "The mayor's going to bring this up," and that was it. There was no conversation between us. There was no, "Do you want to help?" There was nothing. I nodded my head and put my head down and went back to work. There was no dialogue or dialogue between us at all. She mentioned it to me, and I could be wrong. I, polling, it makes sense, but I didn't put it like that.
Yes, sir.
That was not intentionally. I just didn't think of it like that. I nodded my head and went back to work, preparing for that council meeting, mayor. I'll go back to you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I would just like to say as well, and, and nobody tells me which way to vote on anything. Nobody in City Hall, I mean, I, I make my own decisions independently, whether the, I mean, whether this is brought up, and again, I wasn't there for Deputy Mayor Gilbert or Councilwoman Paul's conversation, but it was just brought up that this was coming up at the meeting. Nobody tells me how, how to vote one way or another, so just for the record.
Thank you. I appreciate that. But I can still see why there was no conversation at all, because when it happens organically, that's when the public gets to see how we meet and how we make decisions for their benefit, not for somebody's own benefit of saving their job. If you had, you had your own merits when you and I spoke in your office. I disagreed with them, but you had them. You could have brought those right into council chambers during that meeting, because that, that was the appropriate time. But now we have councilmember Paul that is saying that you did ask for her support on top of telling her that you were making, that I was going to make that motion. So, whether or not, whether it didn't happen to you guys, it still happened. It happened, and we have to do something about it. Dan, I respectfully disagree. I, I do. There's, there's no other way. There's no other way to justify that behavior. I'm making a motion to fire the city manager, again.
Well, you, you had a motion on the table to put it on the agenda, which is part of the rules.
And she seconded it.
And so you need a vote on that motion.
Okay, go ahead and take a vote on the, to add it to the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
No.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
No.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes.
Motion, 2-2.
It's a fail.
It's fail. All right. All right, we will move on with further business.
I have a question. How do we get better if we can't discuss these opportunities where we're not doing good? And, you know, to grow, we have to get through the muddy water to be able to see the clear water again, but these conversations are definitely important to have, instead of just turning the cheek to what's happening. Since it's been 11 months since I've been in here, and when people would ask, "What do you think about the council?" It's a lot what I expected, but it's been a lot more too. And if we can't talk about these issues that we're having, we're going to be still spinning the same wheels for the next three years. And as good people that's trying to do the right thing, you know, when people ask if I'm running again, you know, I'm always like, "Let me get through the first term first," because it's been a lot since the first 11 months, and not saying that I'm not able to do the job, but we have to be able to, enough is enough with turning the wheels with, head when things are going wrong. We need to address it.
Once again, nobody wants to talk about it, though. That, this right here is what bothers me, again. That wasn't even a vote to terminate. That was a vote just to talk about it, to add it to the agenda, to talk about it. Hey, that's, if we're not here to represent the citizens, I don't know what the hell we're doing here. And I don't trust you anymore, city manager. I don't know what else, what else you can do to, to earn that back at this point. I don't know what else. You broke that trust. You know what we need, councilmember Paul? We need integrity in our City Hall.
I'm always going to have it. Whether other people don't have it, I'm going to always have it, so...
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Councilmember Urban?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
First thing I want to answer to, since we're here for a discussion, I would like to answer to the mayor and Councilwoman Paul. I have 100% committed to the citizens of St. Cloud, Florida. I put in every effort I can to the best of my ability. I can't tell you that I'm not human and that things don't always go perfectly, but there's no, and I take exception for any councilperson that says, "I don't have integrity and I don't have the ability to come here and do my job." I believe I do my job as the best of my ability, and that's it. I'm not Superman, but I guarantee you, I put every effort into every meeting that we have here, and this is prior to, during, and after, and it's also meeting with every citizen that's ever called me, emailed me, or talked to me. So, talking about integrity, I hope you don't think I don't have integrity, if that's what I go on.
Nobody questioned you.
Okay, I just wanted, I wanted, you said we want to discuss stuff.
Yeah, but nobody...
I'm open discussion. I just heard, integrity, integrity, integrity. I didn't say anything. I walked in and all of a sudden it happened and said, I was saying that's going to be brought up. That was three words, and I was in the middle of preparing for my, my council meeting.
Nobody's accused you of doing anything wrong.
Okay, well, I just want to know integrity. If, if you guys ever doubt my integrity, call a special meeting and we'll talk about integrity, because that's all I got. That's all I do this for, is to take care of the citizens of St. Cloud. I don't do it for the money. I don't do it for the popularity. I don't do it for the participation trophy. I do it for the citizens of St. Cloud, and I'll do my best. I promise council this today and till the day I'm off of council, just so you know. We're in discussion, so I'd like to discuss that with you. I promise you, I'll give it my all. What that is, if it's below your standards, above your standards, or okay with you, I'm okay with that. So, with that being said, I'm open for... So with that being said, I'm open for discussion. If not, I'll go on and talk about the things I'd like to talk about tonight.
I'll go, since it's open for discussion. Ken, nobody said you did anything wrong.
Okay, I, I just don't like my integrity question.
Nobody mentioned integrity to you.
Okay.
I don't know where you're getting that from, but that's all right, I'm just relaxed over there. I said-
City manager. Okay, I, I, I'm human, so once I feel, once I feel someone come at me, I'm-
But nobody came at you.
Okay, good, good. Well, I was told, you know, this is going to be brought up, and I didn't bring it up, I didn't think about it.
You've got to understand, Ken, I'm learning this of something that happened two months ago, but, so, don't be taking offense to things that I'm saying over this direction.
I'm not, I'm just telling you, integrity is the only thing I've got in life.
Great, I commend you for that.
Okay, thank you. And seven grandchildren and the rest of us. That, that's another story in another day. Domestic violence, as Ms. Paul said, and also there is breast cancer awareness. What I'd like to do is ask the city manager to at least light the fountains in either purple or pink or, or a combination thereof, so we can recognize those two months for this. If that pleases the council, I'd like to do that, if we could. We have certain fountains that are available to us that we can change the colors for that, for that venue.
I support that.
Police department is looking at crossing at Michigan Avenue, and it's to one of the streets, and it's, they cross during the dark, and when we fall back, it's going to be even darker. Some of these kids are crossing the road in those streetlights on Michigan Avenue. I'd ask Public Works if we can go and do a study during the dark time. They went and looked at it, but it was during the day, so you really can't tell what a streetlight's need. It's the crossroad on Michigan Avenue, which I'm sure you guys are aware of. The SRO officer brought me there, and it's really dark during the, before the-
In the morning?
Yes, sir.
I'm not there at, at all.
I just went because it was dark.
No, I understand.
If we could do a study, and if I could do that-
That would be the city manager, if they could do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
The, the safer grant was brought up by the city manager. I just want to thank Chief Miller, and also John Jones and his group, because it was a collaborative effort that put that together. It was the fire department, it was the fire union, it was everybody there, it was us leaders here that went, what backed it. So that was one of the things I was so proud of as a team effort that we did in St. Cloud. Nine point five, I think it's the highest safer grant that we've ever got in a tri-county area, so. Kudos to everybody that put to work. I, I know there's applications flying in right now, and I just hope we can fill those within those, those needs. So thank everybody for that, not just the leaders, the people that really did the work behind the scenes. The EDAC board hasn't met because of the vacancies in our, in our offices. And if there's any board members, if I can propose this to the, to the council, if there's any board members that are on that board where they're not meeting, if there's anybody voiding with boards, or anybody leaving boards, if we can consider putting them on the board. Because they put the effort to go on these boards, and yet they're not meeting, and it's for reasons that we don't have the leadership in that area right now. Open for discussion on that.
You're calling out leadership, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, where at?
For, wait, for, for the EDAC board.
Okay, I, I think, city manager, do you want to answer that? I think, Melissa, you're going to take over the EDAC stuff?
So we don't, we don't have an economic development director, we had discussed with the city council, waiting until after the workshop, which is going to be October twenty-third, if I remember correctly, and hope, hoping to, at that point, put a position out. Melissa does have it, have the economic development staff person, but we haven't, you know, she's, she, she could hold an EDAC meeting, but it's not, it's not her area.
I, I just look at everybody, mayor and council, as volunteering their time to be on boards, and if, if they're not going to meet during this time, if they're somewhere else they can contribute to the city of St. Cloud, to be on the boards, just if there's any board members that you have that you're assigned to that, that aren't fulfilled any of the board. I don't know if it is or not, Mayor, but just a consideration of such, to fill additional boards until this comes back, because three meetings, nothing's happened. And I, whoever I'm calling out, I, it's hundred percent. The last thing I had to say is that soccer fields, we talked about it, and this was on the other council, prior to Ms. Paul and, and Mayor, the ranch has a lot of good land for soccer fields. I, I really do. I'll yield back to you, but just, that, that's a big field, and that's something that can be, we decided not to do it, leave it as open space, Mayor and Ms. Paul, prior to that, but that's still an option if you want to look at that for, for future use. I know they came up and said soccer, it's more, it's probably the biggest growing sport in the United States, I would say.
So we do have the ranch master plan to bring it back to the city council during a workshop, to see if you still want to follow the passive plan, or if you did want to switch to a more active plan. I think we were planning it for December, if I remember correctly.
And, and I don't know how to do that, Mayor and city manager, but if I, if we could put that back on, on, on the agenda, for us to look at it with fresher eyes, maybe we can have some solutions to that. Maybe it's not the solution, maybe there's others, but it's the one I thought of. I yield back, thank you.
Let's see, we got, as y'all heard earlier, we got Soldier City Sunday coming up, November ninth, Veterans Day, of course, November eleventh, but that I believe is a Tuesday. Is Kassemi doing their parade? Do we know yet?
I don't have any details.
Okay. I believe there's one up in Lake Nona, but we're not doing a parade here this year, hopefully next year, with St. Cloud Veterans Council, we will be doing a parade, so. That is all I wanted to speak about. Now we have a-
How do we normally do that? Do we go to their parade once a year, and they come to us every other day?
No, we just wrote them a check this year.
Oh, is that what-
And we don't even know if they're doing it. Congratulations.
I, I, no, thank you for letting me know that.
You know, that's, okay, information section, report section, reports. We got the warrant list number twelve, fiscal year twenty-five, Thursday, October twenty, twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, we have city council workshop, three P M. at the St. Cloud Community Center. Tuesday, November eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, we have city offices are closed in observance of Veterans Day. Thursday, November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, city council meeting, and it will be at six thirty P M. at the St. Cloud Community Center. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.